I hereby call this meeting of the Richmond Public Schools School Board to order. Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Okay, I'm ready.
This meeting- Dr. Supini will not be with us, it's his birthday.
I did see that message, thank you. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance 2020, National 93, and the School Board's Resolution approved on April 20, 2020. Simultaneous, I'm sorry, simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish. The link to access the Zoom meeting can be found in the meeting notice, and once logged in, click Interpretation and select Spanish. All meeting participants are encouraged to speak slowly and deliberately to allow for accurate translation. The notice of the meeting stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and that it would be livestreamed on the school division's Facebook page. The public could view it there, and the link was provided. It also noted that the School Board would not receive in-person public comment. However, public comments could be submitted to the clerk, and the email address was provided in the notice. Comments received would be posted to Board Docs, and they have been posted. The agenda for the meeting was also posted to Board Docs, and the link was provided. And after roll call, it will be determined how many of which Board members are present at roll call. Are you ready for your roll call?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Page?
Here.
Ms. Cosby? Mr. Young?
Present.
Mrs. Door?
Here.
Mr. Barlow? Ms. Owen?
Here.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
And you've also been joined by your student this evening, Sean Baser. Is Mr. Cam- okay.
Mr. Camaras is Michelle Hudescos. But I think he couldn't get his link to work, so-
Okay, I can resend it.
Or Jason, you can just change the name on your panel.
And I'm seeing that we have a different name for our student.
I'm sorry, what name did I say?
Well-
It's Sean Brazer.
Yes, Sean Brazer, I'm representing Patrick Henry for the report this after, or this evening.
I'm sorry. That's not the student, my apologies, I don't see the student. Elijah Williams is our student.
There you go.
He is there, yes.
Here.
And Mr. Camaras, do you have his bio?
I do. Is now the time to introduce him? Okay. All right. So Elijah Williams, welcome Elijah, is a senior at John Marshall High School. He is an honor roll student whose extracurricular activities include captain of the JM Robotics Team, future Business Leaders of America, and Upward Bound. He also serves on my Student Advisory Council. And after graduation, Elijah plans to attend Virginia Tech, where he will study engineering. Welcome, Elijah.
Yes, welcome.
Good evening.
Okay.
Do you have any words you'd like? Sorry, I just want to check if Elijah had any words to share.
Um, yes, I do. I do, I would like to thank you for allowing me to be a part of this School Board meeting. Um, I'm also looking forward to learning about the School Board's process of bettering the education of RPS.
Okay, well, welcome. All right. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
I don't have any changes, Madam Chair, I don't know if anyone else did.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that was Ms. Page and Ms. Burke. Is there any discussion? If not, let's have the vote. Wait, 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 wait. Nope, we're good.
Okay, Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Um, have we been joined by Ms. Cosby yet?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby, thank you. And Mr. Barlow, have we-
No, he is here.
Okay, thank you, motion passes to adopt your agenda.
All right. The next item is to approve the minutes of the November 2nd Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Page, thank you. Any discussion? Being none, then let us have our vote.
Mrs. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Ms. Burke, you're on mute.
Sorry, I had a little computer problem here this evening, yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
All right, now it's time for our public information. I believe we do not have too many tonight to restrict the time. So Ms. Wilson, if you will read those public informations submitted, please.
Okay, give me one.
Ms. Owen?
Yes, Mr. Camaras?
I believe our student representative had a short, couple minutes of comments to share. Would you like him to do so now, or at the end of public comment?
Now is fine. Elijah, please feel free to go ahead now, and then Ms. Wilson will read our other public comments.
Yes, thank you. As the School Board begins to prepare for a possible reopening, I would like to provide input from a student's perspective. COVID-19 has an impact, has impacted our community virtually. Learning has made it difficult to learn for a lot of students, especially for the youngest students. I think that they're, they really need their physical connection to learn successfully. I hope that at the very least, schools will be able to return with a hybrid model, because there are a lot of students and families who have benefit. I can't imagine how difficult the decision was to close schools during that time. A school COVID-19 outbreak. Virtual learning has been a challenge for me. Completing during, completing the 2019 through 2020 school year. Me and my classmates felt like we weren't learning, but just rushing to complete assignments that would have been able to take the school year. Although my senior year looks different from what I imagined, I look forward to graduating so I can further my education and go on to make the world a better place. I, if the decision is made to continue virtually for the remainder of the school year, I hope that seniors would be able to participate in some senior year experiences. Perhaps this could be done by providing us with free COVID testing, mask mandates, and providing social distancing, I mean prioritizing social distancing. I would like to thank you once more for this experience and opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Barlow has joined us.
Okay, thank you.
And now you will read the other public comments, thank you.
All right. Tom Hartman. It has been, it has long been scientifically proven that cold does not cause colds nor other disease or debilitation. I am not suggesting no accommodation to old husbands tale that live for people as common sense, nor am I suggesting a public information campaign in one ear and out the other. But what about raising the temperature at which kids must not go out to recess from 40 to 45 degrees? Huge practical difference. I lay alongside this the fact that in Alaska, the temperature rarely goes above 40, and kids do go out to recess. Caitlin Waldron. Why are there only 85 parking spots at River City Middle School with over 100 staff members? 2020 has already been the Hunger Games. Parking at my job shouldn't be, will there be more parking spots added? Ainsley Perkins. The disconnect appears to be growing between this administration and the unrealistic demands that keeping, that keep being placed on teachers. What purpose is served by requiring teachers to complete a parent log to prove they are talking with them? Teachers are in students' homes every school day, probably more. Such a requirement appears to be busy work and does not show grace. Why, after a decade enduring a public health crisis, are teachers required to have portfolios with seven required areas to document? Students get out earlier, but teachers do not benefit. They don't have planning time because of all of the required meetings, sometimes until 5:00 or 6:00 PM, in addition to the extra work added this year on top of virtual learning. Why on earth are teachers expected to contact families about student attendance? It is my understanding that there are gaps in the curriculum. I am unclear why and very concerned why teachers are expected to fill in these gaps. To be blunt, we are burning out teachers, we are burning our teachers out, and this scares me. Andrew Bryce. I urge you all to vote to not reopen RPS schools in 2021. We are currently in the worst of the pandemic, and predictions are trending upwards in increase in, and increase in cases. Mr. Camaras and the School Board did the right thing by choosing virtual schooling in the fall. Do not negate this progress at the 11th hour. If schools are open, you will be, you will put the lives of your students and communities at risk. Mr. Camaras' almost daily emails highlighting cases in Richmond are evidence enough. Just because the people are over the pandemic does not mean the pandemic is over. Um, and it looks like Caitlin Waldron sent in another one. Congratulations to new School Board members. My questions are quick and to the point. Does every teacher at River City have their own classroom? Does every teacher at River City have a parking space? There's been word floating around that we will have to double up in classrooms if we go back for second semester. That's one of the most unsafe things I have heard in a long time. Clarity on these two questions would truly help me complete my survey. Amanda Reisner. I am going to keep this short and sweet. We teachers are being asked to do more this year than any other year. We have even become attendance officers now. We have more to document and send to downtown than ever before. The amount that is being asked of us is quite frankly going to cause many teachers to quit. My own children and I are home together all day, but I see them and interact less with them this year than any other year. We need our planning time, and by planning time, I do not mean more PDs. There is not a day in the week where I don't have a required meeting or PD with someone else. And many days, those meetings and PDs go well into the evening hours. That means that, that my planning for my students, the people I am here for, is all done after 4:00 every day and well into the nighttime. I have no idea what my own children do from 8:00 to 8:00 each day because of the demands the district is making on us. I ask you to please stop throwing more at us. We are struggling enough trying to make these underlined curricula match the SOLs, and also make them virtual friendly. Please let us teach and plan like we know how. We can do it without all the oversight and paperwork. I promise you, we want the kids to succeed more than anyone else does, but we can't focus on the teaching and planning if we are over tasked with meetings and paperwork. Thank you. Matthew Schef. I am a pediatrician and hospital quality and safety researcher who has a kindergartner and third grader in RPS. I ask that, I ask that you not rule out in-person learning for the entire second semester based on infection rates at one moment in time. Rates will all way, almost certainly be high in December when the School Board votes. It would not be safe to return to school as cases increase. Based on past trends, it may be possible to have younger children return in March. Having a few months of socialization would be incredibly important for their development as a springboard towards next fall. It would also line up with warming temperatures and the ability to have some portion of the day outside. A phased return would also give teachers and staff an opportunity to perfect safety strategies, work through challenges, and learn how to safely reopen in the fall with a small, lower-risk group of students and staff. The consequences of lost socialization and effective learning for your youngest RPS students will be lasting. I have cared for a number of children diagnosed with coronavirus, all of whom have fully recovered. I have also cared for children who were victims of child abuse worse than I have seen in my 10-year career, some of whom will never fully recover. I would also like to ask that you be thoughtful about the risk and benefits of five-day in-person versus a hybrid model as well. While the hybrid model may mean better social distancing, it also means that children who spend their virtual school days at a daycare center will double their exposure to others and more than double their risk of getting and spreading the virus. There is evidence that virtual school and five-day in-person school have similar transmission rates, while the hybrid model has the greatest risk. Thank you for your hard and thoughtful work. It is no secret that virtual school is a poor replacement for the in-person experience, yet I cannot say enough about the incredible effort that my children's teachers have put into adapting to this new way of educating. I also thank the administration at every level for making this experience better than I expected. Steve Clark. Why are chatting sites as well as YouTube allowed on the Chromebooks? It's a major distraction as kids may log into their classroom but watch YouTube all day. Megan Petsko. I am a third grade teacher. This has been an overwhelming year for every single person. We have been speaking of flexibility and grace since before we started backup. From a teacher's perspective, it seems each new week is met with less grace. Two new curriculums, new lesson plans on the horizon, more observations, more testing, attendance tracking each day after school, and the list goes on. Even the most flexible can break. All of these changes that keep happening with little to no warning on top of this year are seriously breaking teachers. Grace needs to be more than talk, thank you for your time and consideration. And that concludes your public information, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, and thank you to everyone who wrote in. We really do appreciate your comments and know that we consider each and every one of them, as well as the emails that you send us. Okay, moving on to recognition, Mr. Camaras.
Thank you, Ms. Owen, I'm going to try to share my screen, one second. Okay. I am thrilled to recognize our 2020 REB Award for Teaching Excellence winners. We have four this year, and I'm going to read each of their bios since they're very impressive folks. First, we have Gilbert Carter Jr. from Franklin Military Academy, and his award was $7,800, not too shabby. While working in the corporate world, Gilbert Carter Jr. volunteered his time in a school and discovered that he loved working with students. If he was going to dedicate his life to something, he felt he should be passionate about it. Now a teacher at Franklin Military Academy, he truly distinguishes himself and makes a difference to students both in and outside his classroom. He builds close relationships with students' families, particularly those who struggle academically or behaviorally, to better support them in school. Mr. Carter believes mathematics is more than just memorizing algorithms and completing problems, amen. Students are often exposed to mathematical concepts in ways that fail to make connections to the real world. Instead of opening a textbook to a problem asking students to estimate the proper ratios for fertilizer mix, imagine if students could learn in an outdoor botanical classroom garden where they can see, smell, and touch. With an REB Award of $7,800, Gilbert Carter will explore the cultural and mathematical foundations of domestic and international botanical gardens. Ultimately, he plans to work with his students to build an outdoor botanical classroom garden for the school community. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Carter. Second is Ms. Ridgely Carter Minter, and yes, that is his sister. Can you imagine that? From Woodville Elementary School, REB Award, she pulled in $7,400. Ridgely Carter Minter came from a family of educators. Her first job was working at the local library, and she was, and she has always loved children. Teaching became a natural career path. Ms. Carter Minter is most excited when she is teaching students one of the most critical tools they will need for success in life, the ability to read. She begins by fostering genuine relationships with her students, sometimes before they ever enter her fifth grade class, which helps them progress socially, personally, and academically. It is important to her that she is culturally responsive to her students, choosing books that they connect with so that they become accomplished readers. Beyond her individual classroom, Ms. Carter Minter's principal describes her as an asset to the entire school, noting her charisma, creativity, and ability to think outside the box. With an REB Award of $7,400, Ridgely Carter Minter will explore the origins of figurative expressions in Casablanca and Granada, and fulfill one of her life goals by incorporating her learnings into a self-published children's book. Please join me in congratulating Ridgely Carter Minter. Third up, we have Jonathan Metcalf, also from Franklin Military Academy, with an REB Award of $7,900. Jonathan Metcalf's booming voice resounds down the hallway of Franklin Military Academy, and it's all too obvious on days when he is not in the building. Students are definitely afraid of being late to his class, but will also go to him first whenever they have a problem at school. He uses procedures, consistency, and extremely high expectations to bring out the best in all of his students. He knows which students can handle flexibility and independence, and which ones need more guidance. Every student has an opportunity to produce their best work as they engage in inquisition-based learning and project-based assignments. In addition to being a respected history teacher, Mr. Metcalf can be found during the after-school hours coaching soccer. He makes home visits to students that have discipline and attendance issues. He is not confined by hours in a school day or traditional curriculum because he believes that all students can succeed and achieve. With an REB Award of $7,900, Jonathan Metcalf will immerse himself in the culture and the extraordinary history of the Basque Country by biking the region in a three-week trips, three-week trip. Congratulations to Mr. Metcalf. And finally, Ms. Ariana Tricky from Swansboro Elementary School, with an REB Award of $11,500. Entering Ariana Tricky's classroom is like traveling to a new world. She has created a unique space to best meet the needs of all learners and prioritizes hands-on experiences whenever possible. Once a year, she converts her room into a jungle where students are given binoculars and safari hats to go on a learning expedition. With the sounds of the rainforest in the background, her third-grade students review for SOLs by hunting for text evidence and passages and measuring animals hidden around the room. By making it fun, the SOLs are no longer scary for her brave adventurers. Ms. Tricky creates a culture of love and high expectations in which her students are encouraged to explore a world full of possibilities. While she often brings the outside world in, she also takes her students out of the classroom. They go on virtual field trips and participate in the weekly garden club, where they learn how to use the land to grow vegetables. With an REB Award of $11,500, Ariana Tricky will explore how endangered ecosystems across North America and their inhabitants adapt to environmental changes. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Tricky. And once again, to all four of our extraordinary winners, congratulations. We are very, very proud of you and can't wait to see all the wonderful things you learn and bring back to your students next year.
Thank you, Mr. Camaras, and congratulations to all four of these marvelous RPS teachers. Okay, now we move on to our board action items. The first one is the personnel actions. Dr. Lee?
Good evening. Tonight I bring forward the following personnel actions. We have the nomination of 13 employees, the contract, the change of contract of 15 employees, the resignation of three employees, the returning from leave of one employee, the rescission of employment of one employee, and the name change of one employee.
Thank you. Do I entertain, may I entertain a motion to approve the personnel actions?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Page moves, and Mr. Barlow seconds. Are we ready to vote? I don't see anything, so let us have our vote, Ms. Wilson.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Abstain.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Abstain. Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Burke, I'm sorry I missed you, wanted to make a comment about the REB awards.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Camaras, for acknowledging those persons this evening. I had the opportunity to be with the administration when they went from door to door to present, to see the happiness amongst our teachers, they were so appreciative. But I must say, since we had three from the 7th District, that I am beyond myself, and then some is so delighted that they are, I know them all well, have seen them in action, and they are stellar teachers. Ms. Tricky, I recently met in another setting, and she too is a fabulous teacher. But most important, what I want to stress is that these teachers have taken it upon themselves, and it's a lot to apply for an REB Award, to go beyond the everyday what's expected. And they're making things happen, I just hope that we can, can support others to also have that opportunity, but to travel the world and do the activities that they will be doing. They are to be commended beyond that and then some. And also kudos to the administration, because they, the teachers did not know what was going on, and it was absolutely comical. They thought they were going to be in a Zoom meeting with their principals, but to show up at their doorsteps, oh, wait a minute, I have to change, wait a minute, where's my mask? What's going on? I have a parent on the phone. But kudos. Oh, congratulations to them as well, the administration, the teams of those schools, and I am just so delighted for them representing themselves and Richmond Public Schools so well, and the best of luck to them and then some.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. All right, moving on to receive for action a salary adjustment to meet state staffing requirements. This is Ms. Hudescos. Nope.
Good evening. Thanks, Michelle, thank you, Ms. Owen. Good evening, tonight I also bring forward an enrollment-based pay supplement proposal based on Virginia Code 8VAC20-131-240. This code states that middle and secondary school teachers, with the exception of physical education and music teachers- with the exception of physical education and music teachers, will have no more than 150 students per week. The code also stipulates that teachers who go over this threshold are to receive compensation. We have identified 10 middle school teachers who would qualify for this supplement based on their student enrollment for the virtual fall semester. And we are working towards a goal of being fully in compliance with this code by the beginning of next school year. Our proposal for this year, however, is to provide teachers who are between 1 and 9% over the VDOE threshold with at least 151 to no more than 164 students with a supplement of $500 per semester. Teachers who are 10% or more over the threshold with at least 165 students will receive a supplement of $750 per semester. This proposal, if approved, would make this enrollment-based pay supplement the most competitive in the region as it doubles what neighboring divisions are offering teachers. At this time, I'd like to thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. I do not see questions or comments in the chat. Is there a proposal, a motion to approve this proposal?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Paige, seconds. Is there discussion? Again, I don't see any. So let's move on to our vote.
Okay, Mrs. Paige?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Cosby wants to know the total amount.
The total amount that we anticipate paying for the fall semester is 6,500.
Okay. And we won't know the second semester until those classes are on, okay? All right, so Ms. Paige had voted yes on the motion. Please continue, Ms. Wilson.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Okay, and then we have budget transfers.
Yes.
It's Ms. Hudesco.
This one's me. Good evening, everyone. This evening I'm bringing forward for your consideration two budget transfers. The first is for librarian support. You'll see it's a equivalent decrease in increase. We're removing or moving some funds out of our central line in order to have a part-time staff member help support librarians across the division with cataloging and ordering during this virtual time. The second budget transfer is more significant, and I'll walk you through some of the details. So about a month ago, RPS received an additional $4 million in what's called coronavirus relief funds. These were state set-aside dollars. And one unique difference between school divisions and localities is localities need to spend their money by December 30th of this year. School divisions actually have a longer period of time for spending. So in order to ensure that we didn't miss out on any dollars, what we were able to use was to use previous qualifying purchases that had already been made for our operating budget to fulfill the grant. So what you'll see on the left-hand side are things that we have already purchased through budget transfers that the board had previously approved. So for example, the $459,000 is for tablets that were already purchased. The $1.1 million is Chromebooks and Hotspots that are already purchased. $234,000 are two of the virtual software purchases, NearPod and No Red Ink, that were already purchased and are in use by our teachers now. And then the $1.2 million are the teacher and student instructional kits that the board had previously approved. So we're able to now journal back all of those expenditures into our coronavirus relief funds. What you'll see that we are then proposing to transfer those now freed-up operating dollars is into two buckets. The first is $1.5 million that will go towards our bathroom work, and Bobby and I will have opportunity to walk you through those expenditures when we get to Agenda Item 6.01 and review the bathroom update. The other $1.5 million here is for our networking work to ensure that our infrastructure is appropriately in place for when we do come back to school, such that our one-to-one computers, now that we are for all students, can work in the building. So this will increase the number of access points throughout the division to ensure that's a workable resource. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I'm looking at the chat.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments about these budget transfers? I don't see any. Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, Ms. Burke has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Door has seconded. I still see no.
I'm sorry. I think there's a question from Ms. Paige, but I don't think.
Um.
Was that sent, Ms. Paige? Just a question.
Ms. Paige? Did you have a question about this? You're on mute.
Okay. Second semester, the funding, I guess, to support expenditures, everything that we need to make sure, you know, whenever we return back to face, you know, we return face to face. So I guess my question is, do we anticipate any more funding from the CARES Act grant and funding, additional funding from the state regarding, you know, the COVID support?
Um, I think what we are waiting on now is new funding from the federal government, and there have been different proposals from either the Democrats or Republicans that have been in the House that are notably larger for K-12 education than the CARES distribution this fall. So I think with some of the national leadership shifts, we are waiting to see where that lands, but we, I believe, would expect that states and therefore educational entities around the nation would expect to receive some kind of funding in the winter that would support our reopening. And when we get to the reopening conversation a little later today and talk about our other large facilities need, I'll share then what our plan is to address that in the short term while we're waiting for potential additional funds.
Okay, so right now, I guess with the the change of leadership on the national level, as far as anticipated date right now, it's still unknown.
Unknown, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Cosby?
Yeah, if I, Ms. Hudesco, if you can go over what you were, your budget, I'm missing something. Maybe I don't have the right sheet pulled up, but what you were talking about, I couldn't necessarily see corresponding information on this budget change request form that's in Board Docs. So I see the total decrease of $3 million and change, and the total increase, $3 million and change. But you have, okay, so RNM supplies and RNM buildings. I mean, you were talking.
3209 or code 3209. So that's the first two. That's facilities. So that's the bathroom work, so that's about 1.4 and change million, the 650 and the 860.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then the other org code 2201, that is technology services. So if we add those three together, we're just a little over 1.5 million, and that will be towards improving the network, the infrastructure within the buildings in order to support the now 25,000 Chromebooks.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Anything further? All right then, Ms. Wilson, let's have our vote on this, please.
Okay. And Ms. Burke made the motion, and Ms. Door seconded.
That is correct.
Ms. Paige?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, now we're going to receive our FOIA training. Who starts, Ms. Wilson or Ms. Lilly?
I do, and I am trying to pull it up. It is also posted on Board Docs, so just give me one second, please.
Angie, did you want me to share the screen or?
You can, but I'm, you know, not going to go slide by slide, but if you would like to, you can.
Okay, I'll just. Okay.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay. Um. Again, Ms. Lilly and I will be providing an overview of the Freedom of Information Act. We do realize that this is the end of your term. However, the FOIA Council link has not been working, and some of you have tried to access that. So we are doing that this evening for you to be in compliance. I just shared that this presentation in its entirety has been posted to Board Docs. RPS does have a FOIA policy, which is Policy 4-2.1, and it may be found on Board Docs in your policy manual. The Virginia Freedom of Information Advisory Council was created to serve as an advisory council to encourage and facilitate compliance with FOIA. The council consists of 12 members, and FOIA may be found in the Code of Virginia Sections 2.2-3705 through 2.2-3714. The purpose of FOIA is to ensure that public bodies make public records accessible to the public, have free entry to meetings of public bodies wherein the business of the people is being conducted. Affairs of government are not.
That are notably.
Affairs of government are not conducted in secrecy, and all meetings shall be open and all public records shall be available for inspection and copying unless a specific exemption is properly invoked. FOIA is a request for physical records, so it is just a request for documents. And unless an exemption is invoked, all public records shall be open to inspection and copying during regular office hours. The requester must identify the request with reasonable specificity, and the public body has five working days to respond with one of the following responses. You are either required to provide the requested records, provide the records in part and withhold in part, and you have to cite the exemption for the invocation of the portion of the records being withheld, withhold the records entirely, and also cite the exemption for invoking, to withhold all of the records, and state that the requested records could not be found or do not exist. If the records do not exist with the public body, but we know who has them, we can direct the requester or should direct the Requester to who has those records and provide contact information. If the records cannot be practically provided within the five working days, a written response specifying the reason why is sent indicating that an additional seven working days is required. However, that can only be done one time. After that, the public body can petition the court for additional time to respond. But you need to work with the Requester, excuse me, to reach an agreement before you do that. FOIA does not require public bodies to create records, and public bodies may make reasonable charges not to exceed the actual cost incurred for assessing, duplicating, supplying, or searching for the requested records. RPS does have a fee schedule, and it is posted to the board page. If it is estimated that the cost will exceed $200, FOIA does allow bodies to require a deposit, which RPS does. And to be consistent, regardless of what the estimate is, we always request half of it, so we are consistent with that in our request for deposits. The FOIA Council has also suggested that a public body can request the entire amount of the estimate rather than a deposit. Before processing a request, a public body may require that any outstanding amount owed for previous requests are paid, which RPS does. FOIA also addresses electronic communications stating that they should be treated just like traditional paper correspondence. Email used in the transaction of public business is a public record, regardless of whether you use your RPS email address or your personal email address. Keep in mind, when corresponding through email, do not put anything in your email that you may not want to see in print later because these are public records. FOIA does provide exemptions, and the commonly used exemptions are scholastic records, personnel records, procurement documents, written advice of legal counsel, confidential letters and statement of recommendation, tests or examinations used, administered or prepared by a public body, and records that are recorded in or compiled exclusively for closed meetings. The record should be checked to ensure that legal correspondence is not inadvertently provided, and disseminating legal correspondence may jeopardize the privilege. I do work very closely with the RPS attorneys when I'm working on FOIA, and I do reach out to the FOIA Council when questions arise. The attorneys do also routinely review certain documents that are requested, such as a request for student records or maybe a personnel item. Failure to respond to a request for records is deemed a denial of access, which is a violation of the Act, and fines may be imposed for violating FOIA. With regard to your meetings, all meetings of the public body are open unless an exemption applies and is invoked. Advanced notice of meetings, the date, the time, and the location must be given at least three working days in advance or in concordment with notice given to the members of the body of special or emergency meetings. Keep in mind that one thing I try to do, I get your meeting notices out at the beginning or the middle of the month for the next month, so I get notices out sometimes more than once, but, you know, at least the three days. Agenda and packets of materials furnished to the members must also be available to the public unless the information is exempt. And commonly used exemptions for closed meetings are employee matters, student matters, real or property matters, protection of privacy and personal matters, and legal matters. Exemptions must be cited, and only those items that are cited may be discussed in closed. Closed must be certified in open session, and any votes that are taken have to be done in your open meeting. Prior to the pandemic and electronic meetings, members could participate electronically from a remote location not open to the public due to a personal matter. The request is subject to approval of the public body and is limited to two meetings per calendar year. Members were also allowed to participate electronically for medical reasons due to a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents physical attendance. And again, this request is subject to the approval of the body. Public bodies are required to identify FOIA officer. I am your FOIA officer, and I am required to receive training annually. My name has. My name has been provided to the FOIA council. We do have a FOIA email address that has been set up specifically to receive FOIA. And that is FOIA at R V A schools dot net. Uh, Attorney Lilly, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, um, School Board Clerk and FOIA Officer, wearing a lot of hats. Um, just wanna enforce that, uh, or reinforce rather, that um, you know, Richmond Public Schools and the School Board takes its responsibilities with respect to the Freedom of Information Act um, very seriously. Each um request that comes forth is recorded and is logged in and um, effort is made to respond to that in accordance with the law. And certainly, um, your, the cooperation of board members, cooperation of the administration is key in making certain that um, that we are on target with our FOIA responsibilities and we're appreciative. Um, I, I'm speaking for the clerk and I'm speaking for myself. We're appreciative of those, of the cooperation that, that is received. Um, at this point in time, you know, you all, as a district, do receive a lot of uh FOIA requests. And um, you'll note by the log that's available. Um, and you know, so that is a, an area where um increased attention is given. As the efforts are made in the General Assembly to expand the laws for FOIA, um, we will keep abreast of those and we will see how things change in the, in the new year. Um, there were some slight changes made last year that were incorporated. Um, and we will, we will keep on track, keep on track and on target, excuse me, as to any changes in the future. Certainly, the pandemic and the virtual world has, has shifted this a little bit. Um, but certainly, um, we are on top of that for you and we can answer any questions that you have. Um, we do anticipate, uh, we do get a lot of requests for emails. So whether you are here this term or here next term, we, you know, we may be reaching out to you to see, make sure that um, you have, um, if you have any emails that are on your personal accounts um, that are responsive, that we're, we're um, making sure that we've covered. But, and that's why we encourage you, and I think Angie did mention, I hope she mentioned, that we encourage you to use your um, R V A accounts at all times when you're conducting personal, excuse me, public business, so that um, the IT folks can, can sweep and get your emails. So with that, um, I do have the uh enforcement and penalties slide that's up. Um, certainly, um, it is a serious, um, excuse me. My voice is giving out. Um. It is the force of law. It is a law and we, uh, there is an enforcement, there are penalties regarding um, non-compliance. And um, we are in communication, as Angela said, with the FOIA officer, uh, excuse me, with the Virginia FOIA Council. It's necessary to determine whether or not um, there are any nuances that we need to comply with. And we can certainly request, if necessary, an advisory opinion um, regarding any guidelines of FOIA if there are any questions. Um, and um, hopefully, next cycle, the training that they have provided online will be on, will be available for board members. And it will just become part of your cycle to do it online and we can um, you know, devote this time to, to other pressing matters. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. Ms., Ms. Page has a comment.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson and Ms. Lilly, Attorney Lilly, for this presentation. Um, I just wanted to thank you all for staying on top of things, um, keeping the board abreast and also staying in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. Um, cause I know it is very important that you know, we follow the guidelines, you know, within the parameters of the guidelines, and I just wanna say thank you cause I know FOIA has always been and will continue to be a, you know, a daunting undertaking, but again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I don't see any other comments, so I'll just say again, thank you to Ms. Wilson, who spends a lot of her time working on these requests and to Ms. Lilly, who's works really hard to keep us straight. I've, many times I have heard her say now, remember FOIA, and we all go, okay, thank you, Ms. Lilly. Okay, moving on. Uh, do we have any reports from board members attending committee meetings or conferences?
I did not receive any.
But Ms. Burke has something to say.
Yes, I apologize for that. I didn't put it in chat. Um, just wanted to share with everyone because it didn't come through the uh budget that I am representing our school system with the Virginia School Board Association's conference, which usually takes place in Williamsburg. Today was the kickoff session, which was very informative in regards to what the advocacy piece will be with the General Assembly. And, and I'll give my report and I let Ms. Wilson know in, in advance for our December meeting. But there was much discuss, discussion across the board. There were um, a hundred and five delegates on the Zoom call this afternoon. Um, behavioral, behavior specialists, that was a big conversation across the board. Um, volunteers who are, who formerly were felons, that's a big, um, that was passed as well for our setting to, for us to advocate when we have our meetings with General Assembly. And also virtual meetings, which it was interesting to hear about those areas that don't have broadband um capacity as we do. So I am representing, usually the chair and the vice chair go together. But this year, since Mrs. Abdiar Chair is moving on, um, I'll do the best I can to carry on as our delegate. And if anyone else is going, you still have time to register because it officially starts on Wednesday. So thank you so very much, and I will bring back a full report, but I just wanted to let everyone know that um I do plan to bring back pertinent information regarding the Virginia School Board Association's uh conference, annual conference. Thank you, Mayor Chair.
Okay, Ms. Cosby?
Um, thank you, uh, and thank you, um, Vice Chair Burke, uh, for representing us. And I just wanted to say in terms of our legislative agenda, I know that there will be a lot more um, as we get into um, creating that, but uh, what I will do, I wanna give kudos to the school system, the city of Richmond, RRHA is a collaboration, whereas um, uh, Dr. Harris has talked about this, but it was also announced today via the mayor's office in regards to having, I'm not saying this right, but um ambassadors or connectors in our communities to help with students who are, uh, to help with families. Um, and to help us uh with students who might not be engaged or connected um, to, to help address some issues that perhaps, um, you know, we might not be able to get to the heart of the matter, but people who are in our communities can. And so this program is actually providing a stipend to members in the community to help out. And especially in this day and COVID, when we're finding that we have so many students who are not connected, so many students who are, uh, or, or families that, that are struggling. So um, I just hope that, I know that the funds have been used, uh, or, or coming from a um, coming from the city's um COVID pot that has to be used within a certain amount of time. And I just hope as we go forward, that this is something that we can um lobby for with the General Assembly, because this type of effort and innovation cannot stop just with COVID. Although COVID, what we're going through right now, I think we're gonna be in it for a, a, a bit. But um, we will need additional dollars. And it's something that I had talked about a long time before in terms of getting people from the community who know the community and who can help us connect. So I just ask that, that is top of mind as we go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Yes, it was very exciting to read about that in the paper. Okay. Then moving forward, uh, we need to receive an update on the decision-making process for the second semester.
Thank you, Ms. Owen, and uh, thank you, board members. I first just wanna say, uh, or acknowledge rather, uh, the number of young people, uh, RPS students who as of late um, have tested positive for COVID nineteen. Um, I know that has caused a great amount of concern understandably within our community and just wanted to uh, send our collective love and, and thoughts and prayers to uh, the young people who have been affected. Um, as I've shared, we, we, we share everything that, that we've become aware of. Um, I imagine there are other cases amongst our students that we are not aware of. And so to, to anyone affected, students, staff, families, uh, on behalf of RPS, we just wanna extend our, our thoughts and our prayers uh, to each and every one of you. As we get further into this decision-making process tonight, we have uh, four items. The first will be a presentation by Dr. Danny Avula, the Director of the Richmond and Henrico Health Departments. Uh, second, I will share the most recent live data from our staff and family surveys. And then third, Ms. Udesko will share uh, some information as she uh discussed previously about our needs in terms of our bathrooms and our air quality in preparation for in-person learning, whether that were to happen next semester or next fall, regardless. Uh, these are steps that we need to take. Uh, and so with that, um, I believe Dr. Avula is on and ready to share. There he is.
Hello, friends.
Hello.
Um, well, let me, yeah, let me share my screen and I will jump into a presentation here. Alright. Well, catching pieces of, of the conversation over the last thirty minutes, I'm just reminded at what uh, massive undertaking uh, it has been to transition everybody to virtual schooling and I just wanna express uh personally and collectively our gratitude to Team RPS who have done an amazing job uh, of, of just making all of this happen for, for twenty-four thousand kids. It's really remarkable. Um, we have worked a ton hand in hand with, with the RPS team, uh, certainly on case investigation and contact tracing, but also looking at data and thinking through uh, you know, different possibilities. And I, I just wanna reiterate, our goal here is to support you all however we can, whether that's uh, sourcing best practices, really looking at data, looking at what's going on in different parts of the state um, and the country. Um, and then at whatever point the school system decides to, to start to move back towards in-person schooling to really work through the details of that, like to figure out what, what are the logistics and how do we do this safely? Um, so a couple of things I just wanna cover today, a snapshot of where we're at here in Richmond, uh, a quick look at what's happening in schools across Virginia. Um, and then to talk about mitigating the risks uh, for in-person schooling, because whether that's second semester or it's next year, at some point, uh, we're gonna need to actually talk about the things that make in the in-person environment safe. Um, and then we should also talk a little bit about mitigating the risks of virtual schooling, because we need to be clear that uh, one is safer than the other from a COVID standpoint, potentially. Uh, but it clearly has other drawbacks and we have got to figure out collectively, not just RPS, but RPS, Human Services, our nonprofit and philanthropic sectors, um, how we come alongside and support uh, our families as they, as they face a really challenging scenario in, in virtual schooling. And then to talk a little bit about vaccination and the path forward. Um, so here's where we are. Here's the case counts and the average, seven-day moving average is that yellow line for case rates in uh, Richmond City. And what you'll see, and what I wanna point out here, is that um, this uh, this peak is back in, in June, was the highest uh, we had seen our case rates get during this pandemic. We had a second peak at the end of August, beginning of September that neared it. Um, and now we're facing a third peak where we're, we're not quite where we were in June, but I actually anticipate we may get there. Um, you know, we've had this significantly increasing rate since the beginning of October. Um, we are, so our, our kind of seven-day rolling average is around forty-two cases a day. Our peak back in June was something like fifty-two cases a day. Um, but really, given the fact that we are facing colder weather, more people are spending time inside, um, we see more circulating respiratory virus in general this time of year. There's really no reason to expect that this trend is going to change significantly. I think, I think we're gonna see increasing case rates through uh, November, December, and, and possibly into January. Um, so what, what does the breakdown of this look like? And, and let me say one other thing, that these uh, rates, this trend really is reflective of what we're seeing across the state of Virginia and across the country. And I think um, the surge in case rates have definitely made decision-making around schools hard. I mean, we've seen uh, New York and Philly and Detroit and other school systems across the country revert. They, they'd been in person and they've, they've reverted back uh, to some degree of virtual, if not all virtual. In large part, that is due to staffing concerns, right? When so many people are either die, getting diagnosed with COVID or uh, or being exposed to COVID and have to be quarantined, it becomes really operationally difficult to run a school system. Um, but I do think it's important to, to tease out that a lot of that is not because of mass transmission in schools, and we'll talk more about that. Um, so here's what the data looks like here in the city. So, uh, you know, to date, we've had over six thousand cases. Um, and what you'll see here is that uh, in our school-aged population, you know, the zero to nines are about three percent. And the ten to nineteenth are about uh, nine percent overall, although when you look at the data in the last four weeks, that's actually shifted. Um, we're seeing a smaller percentage be in this ten to nineteen age range, about, about six percent instead of nine percent. And over the last eight weeks, our data locally and in throughout central Virginia has really skewed towards young adults. That twenty to twenty-nine age group um, was thirty-seven percent of our cases in the last eight weeks. Um, and I think it is really reflective of uh, you know, a segment of our community that is super COVID fatigued. They're going back out to social gatherings and they are um, you know, kinda throwing caution to the wind from a, from a uh, just getting lax about mask-wearing and social distancing. Um, we see that daily when we're doing our case investigations and, and cluster workups. Um, and clearly that has led to state action, as the governor just uh, provided yet another amendment to the executive orders around gathering and mask-wearing uh, this past Friday. So um, some really big steps to try to curb the trajectory of this disease. Uh, and we'll have to, you know, work hard and continue to watch what happens over the next couple of weeks and, and couple of months uh, with, with these trends. So how do we use this data to help make decisions about school? This is uh, this is from the CDC. It's a, it's an algorithm that was created to help guide school decision-making, and really they look primarily at a couple of points. One is the number of new cases per hundred thousand population over a fourteen-day period, and then they have gradations here across the top from lowest risk to highest risk. And then percent positivity, which you've heard us talk about a lot, um, and again, lowest to highest risk there. Um, and then one more kind of important nuance that they really introduced to, to consider whether schools should consider in-person or not is the ability of a school to actually do mitigation, and, and we'll talk more about this, but you know, masks, distancing, hand hygiene, cleaning, and contact tracing as some of the core components of mitigation in the in-person environment. Um, and so kind of tracking around, you know, ac- across the spectrum, um, we, the V D H has created a dashboard that looks locality by locality to see where they fit. This is where we are in Richmond City, so what you'll see here is that um, our cases per hundred thousand people is beyond the threshold of two hundred. So if you look back at this, so we are in the hot, beyond two hundred per hundred thousand population over fourteen days. Um, so we're in the highest-risk category there. Um, but we're in a lower-risk category for our percent positivity, which is down around four point one percent. And then they suggest a couple of other metrics like the percent change over seven days, the percent of hospitalized patients, and then the percent of patients specifically hospitalized with COVID. And what you'll see is that those numbers are generally pretty low. Um, the number of hospitalized patients is a little bit higher, although you know, my hospital colleagues will always tell you, we're, we're aiming to run it at a, on a hundred percent uh, capacity for our hospital beds. Um, so you know, while we're at eighty-seven percent uh, occupancy, uh, there are not real concerns about surge at this point, you know, that may change over the next few weeks. And, and this is important because, you know, as we've talked about from the beginning of the pandemic, the goal to flatten the curve was to maintain enough capacity in. the goal to flatten the curve was to maintain enough capacity in our hospitals so that severely ill patients with COVID or with other conditions could get the care that they need. And so far, we've done a great job of that in central Virginia. So here's a a look at some of the different metrics that the CDC and VDH recommend for to aid in in decision-making around schools. Now, I I think that there is, you know, everybody, like I get emails all the time saying, so why this number and what what like, why did we pick this as the threshold? And at what point should we actually consider stepping back or moving forward? And my answer often is, I don't know, or it depends. And there's just so much context that's important that I there's no like clear algorithm based on these data points that will tell you whether you should return to school or not. And I think the more that we watch the national data and even the 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 reporting out of Virginia, there's a sense that we wanted to decouple the 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 community transmission versus school transmission. Because what we are seeing pretty consistently is that cases in schools, transmissions in schools are not driving community transmission. Cases in schools are of reflection of what we're seeing in the community. So the more cases that are circulated out in the community, the more cases we're going to find in teachers and students who are who are entering the school environment because of their exposures out of school. And I just wanted to kind of share a few anecdotal comments. Last week, one of my colleagues sent an email to all of the health directors around the state and said, hey, we're trying to provide some guidance to our school system. Just would just love to hear what's happening in your localities. So a few different quotes here. Our cases in school are epilinked, so epidemiologically linked to either families or social gathering rather than school transmission. Mitigation strategies in schools appear to be working even with increased community transmission. Another director says, we've had outbreaks in schools. And many cases detected in schools were exposures outside of school, so birthday parties, travel basketball, et cetera. And then school staff and faculty going on weekend getaways and and therefore being exposed in other places. Their consequences follow them to school the next week. Another director says, for the most part, the cases are brought in from the outside rather than transmission within schools. Additionally, I've heard that some parents keep their kids home if they're symptomatic because they don't want to be branded as COVID COVID positive and minimize the hostility of other parents. So something a a real potential we need to think about down the road when when kids start to come back. One of our districts has been open face-to-face since September eighth. Some cases, we we see some cases every day and it's a lot more recently, but no known outbreaks in the schools thus far. And and so the difference there is that, you know, they're seeing cases that, you know, caught it somewhere else, but they're not seeing outbreaks or transmission in the school setting. And then we evaluate each case as it comes, we determine exposures, we quarantine appropriately. A few times enough key people have been quarantined, this specific school closed for a few days. So that's a real concern. And I mentioned this, you know, as we think about other cities that have had that have reverted back to virtual, that the the complication of teachers being not positive with COVID but potentially exposed and requiring quarantine creates some real operational challenges for certain schools. And so sometimes they've had to actually close schools because of that. So specific school closed for a few days, but not from direct illnesses. While our case rate is through the roof and has been rising since October first, we still have zero outbreaks in the K through twelve schools. And nearly all of our schools have had at least partial in-person teaching since the beginning of the semester. So it's a really mixed bag, right? I think that there are clear challenges to trying to maintain an operation, to try to minimize exposure. But I I think by and large, what we're seeing across age ranges is that we're able to mitigate the transmission of disease in the in-person setting. And and we'll be able to follow this, you know, as our rates are surging here in central Virginia. VDH is now reporting outbreaks in in all throughout the state. And so here's the current outbreak, I think from yesterday. I I screenshotted this. And so these are all of the current outbreaks at schools around the Commonwealth. What you'll see is that there's a couple here in central Virginia. There's a Chesterfield School and a Hopewell School. And then here are the number of cases associated with that outbreak. And so the star, we suppress if it's less than five. And so generally, these stars and and any outbreak, we consider two or more people that are part that are epidemiologically linked as part of a cluster. And so you see a relatively small number of outbreaks, a relatively small number of of known exposures, known clusters. And I I don't know. I mean, I I guess, you know, obviously, we hear a lot more about about cases related to schools, but the only things that are considered on VDH's dashboard are cases where transmission has occurred in school, not some of the more incidental things that we see in most school systems. Okay, so at some point, you know, we are going to consider coming back to in-person and and we may do that in the in the coming quarters, we may do that in a in a staged fashion like other school systems have, but with with younger ages first. But I think it's really important to recognize that there's no way that we're going to create a zero-risk proposition. I've said this a lot, that there's no way to completely mitigate the risk of transmission in the school setting. And this Swiss cheese diagram is helpful because it what it what it communicates is that each of the mitigation efforts we could talk about, physical distancing, mask wearing, surface cleaning, contact tracing, each of those are not by themselves a hundred percent effective. But when we layer them on top of each other, you get a solid block of cheese that actually can be really effective in limiting transmission. And so, you know, when we think about these core things that we know work, physical distancing, good ventilation, wearing masks, hand hygiene, fast and sensitive testing, and then subsequent contact tracing, and then surface cleaning. Those are some of the key things that we can do. And when we do those effectively and we do those in concert, they make a huge difference in terms of transmission in any setting. Now, you know, similarly to that, I think that we we need to recognize that as as much as virtual schooling is limiting COVID risk for our kids and for their families, we also need to recognize that it is raising a whole nother host of of risks related to the pandemic. And I, you know, obviously, our families are incredibly resilient and I we know that, we see that every day. But we also know that this is disproportionately impacting our low-income families of color. And so we just need to kind of honestly consider, you know, how are we supporting? And again, that doesn't all fall on the school system. I think that requires a much more coordinated effort of schools, nonprofits, philanthropic sector, et cetera, et cetera. So here's just a few of the things that we are seeing. I'll just share a quick story with you all. So you all know I'm a pediatrician and and periodically I I still work shifts in the hospital. I was at Chippenham Hospital about two weeks ago, working a series of overnight shifts. And while I was on the floor, I had eight patients. Two of them were adolescents who had attempted suicide and were recovering kind of from the medical overdose and waiting awaiting bed placement at a psychiatric facility. Downstairs in the emergency room, there were six other teenagers who had all attempted suicide, who were waiting for placement at psychiatric facilities. Tucker's was full, VTCC was full, and I even when we expanded the net across central, eastern and northern Virginia, every psychiatric facility for adolescents was was packed to the brim. And so I I share that as one anecdote, but I think it is it's a clear indication that this era has had massive impact on our on our teenagers, on our kids and their families. And and there are, there's plenty of data to support that what we've seen over the last six to nine months has had real mental health implications, not just for adolescents, but for younger kids as well. We've talked before together about the impact of the the lack of mandated reporting because kids aren't having that contact with adults who are attuned to to potential neglect and abuse. And so we're not seeing as much mandated reporting, but we're still seeing serious cases of abuse show up to emergency rooms. We're definitely seeing, you know, increases in neighborhood violence and increased rates of gun violence locally and across the country. We know that there are just plenty of things stressing families. Nutrition and food insecurity, I think RPS has done a remarkable job of trying to meet the food insecurity needs of our families. But despite, you know, having hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of locations for food pickup, families just aren't doing it. And that's not an RPS issue. That's a that's a national issue. And so it's another thing that that COVID has exacerbated. And then the reality that for many kids, they are in daycare situations, they are in these learning centers and and, you know, what we've seen is that the mitigating efforts in some of those learning centers or home daycare scenarios are not as good. They're not as effective as what we could accomplish in schools. And so I I think that, you know, virtual learning is going to continue. And so we've got to work together to find a way to address these other issues in concert with with other partners. So what's a what's the path forward? Vaccination is going to be a big part of that path forward. We've had really encouraging news over the last two weeks from two leading vaccine candidates in Pfizer and Moderna, both showing really high above ninety percent effective rates of of their vaccine candidates. We don't yet know what that profile is going to look like in kids. They've only done adult testing to this point. Pfizer, two weeks ago, was approved to start enrolling kids twelve and up in their trials. And so we will probably have to wait another three to four months to see any preliminary data around safety in kids. But the safety in adults looks really good. I anticipate that we will have vaccine for certain populations on the ground at the by the end of December, ideally for frontline healthcare workers and then staff and residents of long-term care facilities. I think that will open up to other residents with underlying health conditions likely sometime in the spring when enough vaccine starts to get circulated and distributed. I don't think vaccine will be widely available for the public until probably late summer. And this is, you know, this is problematic on a couple of fronts. One that, you know, we we're going to have to make decisions about whether what what happens with kids before a scenario where the public by and large is vaccinated. Two, people are not signing up for vaccine right now. If you the national polling really shows a lot of concerns about vaccine. And so I think it would be foolish for us to think that the vaccine would come out and all of a sudden, everybody's going to be jumping at the chance to get vaccinated. So I think we need to, we need to consider the realistic possibility that particularly in low-income African-American communities where we typically see higher rates of vaccine hesitancy, I think we should expect that to be the same. And we are working really hard to you know, to figure out what the right communication pathways, how do we find trusted individuals in different communities to to understand the vaccine safety process and help their neighbors and their spheres of influence make decisions. But it's it's not going to be easy. I will also say that vaccination is going to have to be a big part of our societal move forward because, you know, you you we've got to get to a certain point of immunity, right? With this this concept of herd immunity, where about seventy percent of the population has to have immunity either by having had COVID and developed their own natural immunity or by being vaccinated. And right now, you know, we did a study over the over the summer for Virginians and showed that under four percent of people in the state of Virginia had been exposed to COVID that had antibody response to COVID. I would guess that's a little bit higher now, but but probably not ten percent of our population. And so if we're if we're looking at about ten percent or less, we still need sixty-plus percent to get vaccinated before we achieve the kind of herd immunity that's going to really slow transmission of COVID. So vaccination is is going to be an important strategy, but it's not going to solve things overnight. And so I think as we think about our path forward, one of the things that RPS has done an incredible job of is listening well to teachers, listening well to parents, really trying to understand where our community is at and what they're what they're up for. And so we've got to continue to listen well. We need to do the planning now, again, whether that is, you know, second semester or next year, there's not going to be a significantly different scenario to 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 step into. And so we need to do the planning around in in person now. Because what we know is that that the work, like the mitigating efforts, the habits that have to be built, the processes and procedures are really cumbersome, and they're going to take some time for teachers and subsequently students to to kind of get a hold on and start executing well in the school setting. So I I guess, and and one last thought, I we we talked about this last time, but the early data that we saw nationally and internationally, that younger kids are at at lower risk, that has continued to hold. We see data regularly that shows that kids can clearly get COVID and they can transmit COVID. The younger you are, the less likely that is to be the case. Younger kids under ten seem to be about fifty percent less susceptible to get the disease. And and so therefore, if they're less susceptible to get the disease, and once they get it, they're mostly asymptomatic or mild symptoms, they're less likely to transmit it. And so our mitigation factors in the in-person environment can be really effective to limit to limit transmission. So, you know, I think at whatever point we start getting comfortable with the idea of bringing kids back, I I do think starting with a younger age group, a K through two or a K through three really gives us the opportunity to figure out our systems and processes and to plan well and execute well before bringing older kids back. So I will, I will pause there. Again, just express my gratitude to you all as the board and to all of the folks at RPS for for navigating a really, really challenging time.
Thank you, Dr. Avula. And you're always so clear. We do have a couple of people with questions. First, Ms. Burke, and then Ms. Dorr.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Avula, for keeping us abreast of of you always make it so clear as as our Madam Chair just stated, and we thank you for that. And I hope you're taking good care of yourself and your family as well. This is quite an undertaking, quite an undertaking. So I know no one is sick in your family, so I'm going to claim that for the rest of us as well. So thank you so very much.
I'm keeping helping, Ms. Burke. Thank you.
There you go. I have one comment and one question. Regarding the vaccine update. So if it's about, and I've always thought about that, once the vaccine does come to fruition, that we can take it. As you stated, it may be next summer before our population in terms of at the essential workers and others. So I'm wondering if the children would be first, if we do decide to go back whenever, when the vaccine is out. Will the teachers be on the essential list, or do we know now? Will it be children first? And has that been thought about in terms of public education?
Yeah, those, all of that planning is still pretty loose at this point. So as we think about the phases that 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 are going to be prioritized, first phase, frontline healthcare workers and long-term care facilities. Second phase, older adults, either elderly or or adults with underlying conditions. And then people in congregate settings are kind of the sort of phase two A or whatever. So people who are in prisons and jails and then people in schools, right? Like those congregate settings where transmission could occur. And and then the last phase will be sort of the public at large, you know, folks who are not at any increased risk because they don't have underlying conditions and they're generally youngish and healthy.
Interesting, and we don't know the side effects.
Of the vaccine. Yeah, so the initial, the initial reports, both Pfizer and Moderna have had large-scale trials. Pfizer had forty-four thousand people enrolled in their trial. I can't remember Moderna's number, but it was north of thirty thousand people. And what they're reporting, in addition to to better than ninety percent effectiveness, is also that they have not seen any serious adverse events in their in their study population. So that's encouraging. Now, we haven't seen all of the final data. We have a few more weeks where they apply for the for their FDA authorization. But really, at this point, the only side effects that have been reported are the same things that we see with vaccination generally. So pain at the injection site, some muscle aches and low-grade fevers. And anecdotally, from some of the people who have participated in trials, they've said we've been able to, you know, just taking some ibuprofen has resolved those local mild symptoms, but no serious adverse events to to date.
Well, my question is, I heard on the radio this morning on one oh five point seven, that the reason that people of color, black and brown persons oftentimes are susceptible to to receiving this virus is because we don't have ample vitamin D. Is that true? And what do I go to store and buy all of the vitamin D?
There is an increasing body of evidence that vitamin D can actually, you know, boost immune health in general. And you're right, people of color, people with melanin produce less vitamin D because it it our skin doesn't absorb the sun rays and activate vitamin D as effectively. It's why we've supplemented things like with like milk with vitamin D. But we do see lower rates of vitamin D. So I would absolutely encourage people to, you know, talk with our doctors and and get on vitamin D supplements if if they do have low circulating rates. It's not, I mean, it'll it'll help you in your general immune response. It's not going to totally protect you from COVID.
But it's a start. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Now, Ms. Dorr, Mr. Young, and then Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Dr. Avula. Echo whatever everyone else has said about your your partnership with. Echo what everyone else has said about your, your partnership with us and appreciate you spending lots of time with us and hope it it continues. I have sort of four questions. But I think they're quick. One, I wanted to, I read somewhere that the guidance that you have offered for Henrico and Richmond is different. And we talk a lot about our student populations being different from the counties and our infrastructure being different. But I was wondering if you could comment on that. Two, I wanted to, one of the concerns that I've had is that while we've closed schools virtually, childcare centers have remained open or both informal and formal. And are are we pushing risk from our school workers to our childcare workers? And if you could comment on, on that. Three, another concern that I have is around hybrid models in general. I'm worried that some districts are doing a lot on paper to make it seem like they're addressing the issue when they're not actually addressing the issue. For example, if you had, you know, Monday and Tuesday, one group of kids, Thursday and Friday, another group of kids, but they have the same teacher, are you really mitigating risk? And I just, so I was wondering if you could just, I know we're, we're contemplating some sort of hybrid model. So I'd like to understand that a little bit more. And then finally, I thought that chart that you displayed of the percent positivity and the, the rates of infection in the community was super illuminating. And I was wondering if that is publicly available? And if not, if that's something that we could get a regular report out? This may be a question for Mr. Cameras, we could get a regular report out on. You know, I think that this is very, so, you know, so here's my two cents, this is very sobering. And it's sobering that this is likely not going to, you know, I think we were all hoping at least that next year, things could be different, and it doesn't seem like that's really going to change. So I, you know, I personally am thinking a little bit differently about the needing, the need to be dynamic as it relates to our response. And I think that chart provides some helpful information. So anyway, sorry, that was a lot, but.
So many questions, Ms. Dorr. Yeah, so let me, the last one is that, yes, those, those metrics are readily available before I'm off. I will pop the link in the chat. It's on the VDH website, there's a link that says K through twelve metrics. And then you can search by locality, and that thing is updated once a week. And so you can, you can kind of track what's happening in Richmond City, week in, week out. The first question, guidance between Henrico and Richmond being different? I don't actually think my guidance has been different at all. I, I, I mean, my goal is just to report what we're seeing, what the data says. And the data says that schools are not places where we're seeing a lot of transmission, that that the cases in schools are reflections of what we're seeing in the community, and that risk of transmission is much lower in in younger kids than older kids. Now, if if the, if the guidance differs at all, it's in the fact that, like, everybody's got to listen to their constituents, right? Like, they've got to know where are their teachers and where are their parents? And if the teachers and parents are saying, you know what, we're not comfortable coming back to school, then that's going to, that's going to drive the decision-making, right? So I think we, everybody is trying their best to listen well to families and then devise a solution that is working best for the people that we're, we exist to serve. So I, I, I hope that there has not been confusion about, you know, what, what my role is and and the guidance that I've been giving. I mean, obviously, the, the feedback from parents in Henrico looked pretty different. And and, you know, we're, it sounds like we're still, and Mr. Camus will, will report that out, but it sounds like we're still gathering information about where Richmond is at. But yeah, I, I don't have any. You know, I think we need to, we need to consider the impact that both in-person and virtual have on kids. And we've got to figure out how to mitigate risk in both situations. And, you know, if we can effectively do that and parents and teachers are ready to do that, then we should do it in person, because that, that is going to be better. But it's a much more complicated situation than that. All right, daycares, and then passing all the rest to childcare. Yeah, I, I mean, I think there are some daycares that are like licensed daycares, they follow the DSS guidelines, by and large, they've done a really good job of figuring out teacher-to-staff ratios and and minimizing risk. It hasn't been perfect, like, we've had outbreaks in in childcare centers. Obviously, that's a much different setting than, than a school, just because you're typically, you know, with toddlers and little kids. It's, it's harder to maintain that distance consistently. But I, I, my actual concern is more for the, like, the plethora of home-based daycare. You know, like, so many of our kids, you know, can't afford daycare centers or can't get a slot in a daycare center. And so there's a bunch of kids in people's homes, and that's not regulated at all. And so, you know, I think that is creating pockets of exposure all over our city that that we should be concerned about. So yes, I definitely think that there is a shifting of risk to, to other types of employees in a situation where mitigation can't be controlled as effectively. And then thoughts on the hybrid, hybrid models, and does that actually improve transmission or not? I mean, I think that when we are, you know, some of the early reports that we saw, for example, out of the state of Illinois, where they were cycling kids in and out, and they were having different exposures, either on the school bus or with multiple different teachers. And, you know, like, all of the layers of potential exposure, buses, car pools, different teachers, that, it does get complicated. I mean, it gets harder to manage exposure when there are all those different layers. But I would also say that, you know, what we've watched in other public schools across the state and private schools here in the Richmond area is that they actually have been able to figure out how, like, processes that work with with standard in-person, with hybrid virtual learning and in-person, and even with some of these, like, day-on, day-off models. So it doesn't seem ideal. I don't have, like, really good data to point to to say we shouldn't do it. But I can start working on case reports around Virginia for those that have tried it, if it would be helpful.
Probably. Okay, thank you. Mr. Young, then Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Danny, pleasure, so grateful for your, for your sound counsel. Thank you. Two questions. The first, I'm ask if you can to put on your prognosticator hat, and maybe your historian hat, too. You referenced this a moment ago in the context of vaccine and, and specifically for, for us, for Richmond Public Schools. Do you have some sense of of when it may be that we have, in, again, for the RPS stakeholder population, that herd immunity? In other words, enough of our stakeholders, students, families in particular, would, would agree to, to be vaccinated? Is, and is there, and if, and and I recognize this is a difficult, if not impossible, question to ask. So I just let me put that disclaimer in there. But is there a, what does that variance look like between, for example, a maybe a spring of twenty-one and a fall or winter of twenty-one? So that's, that's the first question, is trying to gauge when we think we would have enough of our stakeholders that would would agree to take the vaccine, again, perhaps basing on, on past vaccination. And then the, the second question regards subject, and again, you referenced this. We have spoken in these meetings, in fact, a lot about some of those other risks, risks specific to, to being out of, out of the classroom and and away from your colleagues and peers. But can you, and you, and you addressed them this evening. Can you perhaps elaborate on what, what some of those, what's, what constitutes the impetus for some of those, those very threats? So you spoke to what they are, but provide a little more science, provide a little more science that I know you work with all the time around what, what those look like.
Sure. So prognostication. I think spring of twenty-one, just based on vaccine availability alone, we're not, we're not going to be close to the kind of coverage we would, we would need to at least make a decision based on herd immunity. I think fall of twenty-one is possible, but would be really difficult. And I think the difficulty will be less around vaccine availability and more around vaccine hesitancy. For really legitimate reasons, African-Americans historically have had much lower vaccine rates, up to fifty percent lower when you think about the flu shot. They vaccinated at higher rates when it's mandated, like, you know, T-DAP, for example. I don't see any scenario where we're mandating this vaccine. It may, you know, school systems or DOE may get to a point where they say, you know, if somebody's going to come back in person, they need to get vaccinated. But I just, I feel like there's so much angst around this vaccine process, around the fact that it's new technology, around the fact that it has happened really quickly, around the fact that COVID has changed so much. And in the process, we've eroded the public's trust in government and public health. You know, we, we started at the beginning of COVID saying, hey, nobody wear a mask. Let's, let's preserve those masks for healthcare providers. And then a few months later, we're telling everybody, like, masks are the most important thing. Early on, we said, don't touch anything, wipe down your groceries before you bring them in the house. And now we know that, you know, contact spread really isn't a big driver of COVID transmission. And so there's just example after example of where new learning has resulted in new recommendations. But the, that's a hard pill for the public to swallow. And so it's been really challenging, and I think vaccination will be just, you know, the, will, will manifest that distrust as well. And so I think that, combined with the fact that the African-American community, because of our past transgressions, experimenting, you know, with with large segments of the black population, they're just going to be way more wary about getting the vaccine. And you are, like, I've already seen that with COVID. Testing, for example, there was large pushback from, from segments of our community. So I think it's just going to take a lot more work and a lot more time to get to any kind of herd immunity with the RPS population. I think if we do, do like the most amazing job ever, you know, we, we could get close in the fall, but I, I think it's going to be the better part of the year, you know, in into sort of the next semester of twenty twenty-two before we, but before COVID is kind of dissipated from our community. And then the other question was around the risks, the, the kind of non-COVID-related risks to people in, in virtual schooling. So I think, you know, I talked specifically about mental health, and I can send, what I'll do is, as I'm done, I'll post a couple of links of of articles, large-scale articles that have looked at anxiety and depression rates in, in young kids and some other mental health outcomes that are concerning. So that, that's probably the biggest one. But I, I think that, you know, that the impact on our kids who are in homes with, you know, the adults in their life and not having the opportunity to connect with other adults or friends, and particularly when they are in potentially abusive situations, this lockdown, this, you know, revert, the reversion to everything happening in a home, particularly for young kids, is exacerbating child abuse. It is, it's, it's decreasing, so what I said is it's decreasing the reports of child abuse, because they're not seeing teachers, they're not seeing other adults who can notice the signs of abuse and report it. But we are increasing the number of people who are showing up with, with really severe manifestations of child abuse. And Robin Foster, who is a pediatric ER doc and kind of our state expert on child abuse, did a great grand rounds two weeks ago for pediatricians, talking about the trends in abuse that we're seeing here in our community at VCU and and across the country. And so I, again, I can, I can pull some of those articles and and post them in the chat or send them in a follow-up email if it would be helpful. But those are the, the two big ones that, that come to mind.
Thank you. And Dr. Avula, I will say, an email would be better, because when the meeting ends, the chat is gone. So that would be very helpful. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll echo what everyone else said, Dr. Avula. Thank you so much for, for coming and for providing your, your feedback and guidance. To follow up on your last point related to the child abuse, I do think that would be very helpful information to, to the extent that there's any data that we can see. I think if we're going to, when we first made the decision to go virtual, I think that was all, we're all cognizant of the fact that there may be a risk of under-reporting, there may be a risk of abuse at home. There may be risk of of mental health consequences. And anything that we can see to actually help back that up would be very useful. I would, I am curious about the, the mental health impacts of students and teachers who may feel anxious about returning in, in the midst of a pandemic as well. I know that I've spoken with many teachers, some in other jurisdictions, certainly some in RPS, who've expressed a significant concern about being forced to or even feeling obligated to return to the classroom during the middle of the pandemic. And I think that's something that we have to take into account as well. I know that you brought that up. And that we'll continue to discuss as we get more stakeholder feedback. But I will say, based on what I'm, what I'm seeing so far, and, you know, we're, we're seeing these rates tick back up. We're seeing, we're seeing, you know, a center, a situation where people will be indoors more, where we will be seeing more, likely be seeing more cases as a result of family gatherings and things of that nature, based on the fact that we very clearly have a student population and a teacher population in RPS that, that could suffer to a greater degree from COVID infections. I'm, I'm really skeptical about the idea of returning back in any meaningful, or I guess in a, in any significant manner at the beginning of the next semester. I realize my say on this kind of ends next month, but my impression at this point is that, that I don't intend to vote for any kind of significant return. So I'd like folks to know that at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I appreciate the, the presentation and the information. Wanted to say, you know, one thing that makes, gives me some pause is I want to make sure that we are not, that we are cognizant of the fact that the, while we have a mental, you know, there's certainly, you know, mental health implications. I do want to make sure that we don't imply that the increase that we're seeing in mental health is solely attributed to the fact that we're not in school. This is an incredibly difficult time for our country. People are unemployed, people are getting sick, family members are getting sick. There are a host of reasons why we are seeing an increase in mental health issues. And, and the fact that the kids aren't in school, it's simple, it's certainly part of it. But, but this is part of a larger societal concern. And so as we are considering the impact of mental health on the decision to go back to school, you know, I think we have to recognize the, the magnitude of where we are in the country right now. You know, I think that it's not a surprise that where I, I stand on this, you know, we, we have to put the, the, the health of our, our, our students and the community first. And I, I want to highlight again, from my perspective, there is, I mean, there, it's, 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 there's simply no plausible way that we could have some type of hybrid model. It's, you know, there's no way, you know, I mean, in, in the survey, without transportation, you know, we, this is, it's, it's, it's simply not doable. There's no way that teachers can be teaching to a class. You know, essentially, our, our model right now is essentially synchronous, you know, it's live. So the, you know, there's, there's no way that teachers can both be teaching to a classroom and mo- and moderating a chat and, and keeping students engaged online while also having a group of students in the classroom. So, so I, I think that, I, I think that our time would be best focused on right now, on making sure that the virtual program that we have in place is, is meeting the needs of our students. What, what can we be doing to in, in, increase the engagement of students and attendance of students in our virtual programs right now? How can we make the system that we have right now work better? What can we be doing? Because, you know, we're seeing turnover in our teaching staff. You know, I believe that one of my, my kids is going to You know, I believe that one of my, my kids is going to lose a, a teacher, you know, come January. What can we be doing to make sure that our teachers are, are committed and, and, and feel that they are being supported in, in a time when the paradigm for teaching has completely changed? You know, we're looking at professional development. I've gotten a few emails about that. Our teachers are feeling like there's not enough time to get stuff done. So, so I, I think that, you know, we should, right now, recognize where we are, figure out how to optimize, given the limitations that we have, and then make sure that we are prepared. I would like to consider, you know, as we move into our budget development process, that we look at the possibility of expanded summer school. You know, what are the things that we can do to set ourselves up for success and set our students up for success? You know, beyond this school year, because to me, you know, there's, there's simply no way, there's no way that we can be all things to all students and all teachers at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. I don't see another, I have a question. Dr. Avila, you were talking about the, the dashboard from the state about the students who, or the schools that have had students positive. And I think you said that those are only if the students contracted the, the virus or possibly did in school. Because I know, because they have a dashboard on their website, that there is a very close by school system who have had at least ten reported cases in a school within the last week, and they're not on your list at all. So how, how do you make the list? Can you provide that for me?
So each outbreak is reported in the state database, and the investigators that look at the details of the outbreak will determine, was that an outbreak that occurred because of school-related interaction? So I, I think you're talking about Hanover because they've had a steady stream of cases. But when it's determined that like, a kid got COVID because they went on a trip with their travel soccer team and they had an outbreak, or they were at a family gathering where, where that, and that was the defined epilink, that will not be reported on the VDH website because the VDH website is only reporting transmission that occurs in school-related activities.
Okay, so you could have those students in the school be identified as having COVID, but they would not be included on that document?
They would only be included if somebody was in the school and gave it to somebody else in the school or in a school-related activity.
Okay, thank you very much. That clarifies that for me. I don't see anything else. So I understand you're going to come back and help us again. Oh, Ms. Page, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Page. You're on mute.
Right. Um, I couldn't type fast enough to respond. Thank you for this information. Thank you for such an informative presentation and, you know, providing, providing us the science. And so, you know, making our decision, an informed decision based on the science and the facts. So again, thank you.
My pleasure, Ms. Page. Thanks. I, I just wanted to make one more comment in response to Mr. Barlow and Ms. Gibson's comments. There's, you know, I think part of figuring out this puzzle is, is again, listening to your teachers and knowing their situation. And I would not ever recommend that a teacher who, you know, is in that sixty-plus category or has significant underlying conditions, like, I would, I would really urge them to opt for virtual teaching because, you know, no matter how low the risk is, it's not, it's not worth the gamble. But many of our employees are not in those high-risk categories and might actually want to, to be back in person. And so I think by, by really, again, listening well, understanding where your teachers are at, and figuring out, okay, what percentage of our teachers would actually be up for this? And does that align with the percentage of students who would come back? I think that's where you, you are able to start to put the pieces together and, and see if, if some kind of in-person and virtual model would work for our population.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Door?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, Dr. Avila, thank you very much for being with us and spending this time with us. I, I believe you're going to come back and help us again at our next meeting. And I thank you in advance for that and for all the, the sharing you're going to do with your email. You are a priceless resource for our community.
Thank you. See you guys in a month. Take care.
Okeydoke.
Shall I continue with someone?
Yes.
Okay. I too want to thank Dr. Avila. I know he has left, but still would like to express my appreciation to him, not just for coming this evening, but for his leadership throughout the pandemic and for being available to me to provide all sorts of guidance for the last several months. So thank you. As, as Dr. Avila noted, one of the very important considerations is how our families and our staff are feeling about all of this. And so I'm going to share my screen with the most up-to-date results from the survey. So one second. Okay, I'm going to begin with our family survey. Thus far, we have had two thousand nine hundred and forty submissions. So a little bit over ten percent, about fifteen percent of our families. And we've had pretty good representation across schools. So I'm gonna try to do this so you can see it on the screen. So this is the first batch of schools. So here's the second batch. Third batch. Fourth. Fifth. And I believe that takes us to the end. Okay, continuing on with our demographic data, what, do any of your students receive exceptional education services? You can see here their responses. So a good chunk of our families reporting yes, which is representative of our population. Next question is on ESL services. I'll note, I'll go to the Spanish version of the survey momentarily, and you'll see a number of families who have indicated that they receive ESL services on that survey. The next one is just a measure of economic stability, and you'll see the responses there. And then next race. This is still over-representing our white families who comprise about ten percent of our student body. But as you can see here, representing more than ten percent of our respondents at this point. And then to the questions. So which would be your preference for the second semester? You'll see a sizable majority are in the remain virtual category. Next, I, I, I believe, yes, five hundred thirty-six. The next largest would be a hybrid option for all students. The hybrid option for a select group was the smallest there at one fifty-one. And then the full in-person for a subgroup of students was the third most selected at three hundred ninety-five. Again, this is just about fifteen percent of our families represented and not yet a representative sample of our family. So keep that in mind. Next question, if RPS had in-person instruction during the second semester, would you send your children? And there again, a sizable majority in the no category and a significant chunk also in the not sure. And then importantly, if you said yes, so eight hundred twenty-nine said yes, would your answer change if RPS cannot provide transportation, given that we currently use our buses for food distribution? You can see most said yes, they still would. But three hundred and seventy said, in that case, no, I would not send my children to school. And then again, a sizable chunk, not sure. So I think obviously, understandably, there's still some unease either way, and people are still processing this. And then there are hundreds of comments, and we will download all of those and, and post those as well. Okay, I'm now going to take us to, one second, to our Spanish language family survey. And this one, we have a hundred and seventy-six responses thus far. And as you can see, they are largely from schools with most of our Spanish-speaking families. I'll click through so you can see. Okay. And then this question, I'll do some translation on the fly, is about receiving special education services. Next question is about receiving ESL services. So about forty percent saying yes. Which is a reminder to everyone, just because a family is Spanish-speaking does not mean that their children need ESL services. Then our economic question. You see, it looks like a majority are in the yes in terms of receiving some sort of public support. And then the question about identity, and understandably, the vast majority identify as Hispanic or Latino Latinx. And then of the options, again, a majority in the remain virtual, though a significant minority in the hybrid for everyone. That's that second category. Then the next question, this is about whether you would send your children. Here, nearly a majority in the yes, though the no is very close. And then the question about if we were not able to provide transportation, would that change your mind? Fifty saying, no, it would not change my mind. I would still send my kids. And thirty-three saying, yes, it would change my mind. I would not in that case. And then forty-eight, not sure. A little bit more mixed than our English survey. And then again, a number of comments, and we will post those as well. And then last, I will go to our staff. And we have had a, a very good response rate from our staff. One thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. We have about three thousand school-based staff. So about sixty percent, which is a, a great response rate, having the survey only out for a few days. And I'll click through the schools so everyone can see the representation. Okay, then in terms of identity, you can see the breakdown here. And then preference. And on this one, you can see an overwhelming preference to remain virtual, about eighty percent of our staff. So a very clear message from our staff. And then if we had in-person, again, an overwhelming majority would choose not to work in-person. Second group is, is uncertain, and then the minority in the yes category. And then hundreds of comments as well, and we will download those and post all of those as well. So let me pause there before shifting over to Michelle, who'll speak about some of the facilities issues. Want to just open up if there's any questions, anything I can clarify regarding the survey data.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Camaras. And I'm very thankful for all the feedback that we've received from families and, and certainly the, the staff of RPS with this really significant issue. Quick question for you, Mr. Camaras. You mentioned that, that the survey, that the survey was geared towards school-based staff. Does that include transportation workers? Okay.
Yes.
So I did have a concern about a premise with one of the questions, which was whether, whether families would feel comfortable sending their students back in the event that a transportation wasn't an option from RPS. Because I, I think that, that certain families with, with the privilege of, of transportation options would have a greater, greater access to in-person instruction. And I do think that prevents, presents some fairly significant equity issues. And then I also, you know, I don't want to sort of sort through the tea leaves too much, but I would wonder how we would go about handling absences and in particular, transportation-related absences for students who, or for families who do feel comfortable, at least asserting now that they think they have transportation, when an infection could happen or transportation reliability may be an issue later in the semester. So how do we handle students who otherwise would be in a classroom, who may need to be participating virtually for a day or two or for a week? Or maybe want to switch back? And I'd be curious to know how we would handle that. I know that some of the surrounding counties wanted families to commit to in-person instruction or virtual instruction for the entirety of a semester or for a marking period. I think that presents some real challenges for us if we want to be nimble and want to, to really be meeting a lot of our families where they are. And then I, I do think it's worth highlighting, and I don't think it probably comes as a surprise to most of us that the staff was, that many of our staff members felt so strongly about a virtual return. And what's amazing about that to me is that we have, we've heard a, a ton from our teachers about how challenging this school year's been, and it's really come with unprecedented challenges. Whether that be because we're implementing a new curriculum or because we're, where our teachers are teaching entirely virtual, virtually, and may not feel that they're adequately resourced or that they need more training. We've certainly had plenty of meetings for our teachers and trainings. And so in the midst of all these challenges, when we know how much weight we're putting on the shoulders of our teachers, we still see, see this level of feedback that says that, that the vast majority want to return virtually. I think that really, really speaks to, to the weight that, that our teachers are putting behind the safety concerns in this, in this time. So I just wanted to point that out.
If I may, just very briefly, I appreciate you raising the transportation question, and, and I would agree, introduces inequity if we were not able to provide transportation. We included that question in part based on We included that question in part based on feedback we got from the reopening committee that felt it was important for us to try to gather information on whether if that were the case, would that change people's perspective? And they thought it was important that we were upfront about the reality that we might not be able to provide transportation given our food distribution program. So that was the genesis for that question. But but I agree, it would introduce all kinds of inequities.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Udesco, Mr. Hathaway, who's who's up next?
Before, before they go, sorry, before Michelle goes, the survey will remain open through December 6th, really, when we make our final decision. So please encourage staff and families, particularly from underrepresented communities to participate. We will be sharing the word in multiple venues. I'll be discussing this during RPS Live on Wednesday. Our family liaisons will be out in the community gathering responses as well. So the more feedback, the better. And and just a thank you to everyone who has already responded. It's a it's a pretty impressive number of folks who've already chimed in, and we really do appreciate all that feedback. So thank you.
Okay. Great. Well, before we get started, I want to give a huge thanks to Bobby and his team who have spent weeks, not months, on the next two pieces that we'll be discussing. And that's to be able to provide a status update on the bathrooms as well as the air quality. So we'll start with the bathrooms. And as you may recall, in second semester decision-making deck, we talked about two levels. That level one for a bathroom meant that all the sinks and toilets were fully functional, stall doors locked, soap and paper dispensers were operational. And that level two was that really foundational bar, plus some of the things that make a bathroom more aesthetically pleasing, fresh paint, no water stains, no broken tiles. And so this expansive spreadsheet that you see takes each one of our bathrooms in every school and assesses them at that level two bar. So I think what I'll do is orient you to two tabs. And so Jason, oh, good. Jason, if you go to Blackwell, just for an example, so you'll see all the schools are along the bottom. And so let's just orient ourselves to Blackwell here. So you'll see on the column B, each one of the bathrooms are labeled. So the nursing clinics restroom, a girl's bathroom in the lobby, a boy's bathroom in the lobby, the first grade girls wing, et cetera, all the way down. And so you'll see that Blackwell has 20 different bathrooms that were assessed. Then if you look across the top, you'll see four buckets of work. So plumbing work, whether that's indication that a faucet needed to be replaced, the sink, urinals, toilets, et cetera. Then there's the bucket of mechanical work, which could include ventilation repair, things around the baseboards, grills, et cetera. Then there's general contracting work, which could be repairing partitions, the soap dispenser, paper toilet paper, holders, tiles, the general painting. And then the fourth bucket is electrical work, which might be lights or things like that. So let's take a look at two, just as an example. So Jason, if you'll take us to the to line 24, the boys' first grade bathroom, you can tell because it says one sink, one toilet, that this is a single stall bathroom. So there's nothing indicated in any of the green cells for plumbing work needed in this bathroom. And there's nothing indicated for this bathroom in the mechanical work section. But if you scroll over to general contracting work, you're going to see there's a 111 under tile repair, painting, and replacing a mirror. And you'll also then see that in the notes. And then there's nothing in the electrical work. So for each one of the bathrooms on each one of these tabs, that's how you'll be able to tally up what the needs are. And we did ask a subset of our principals to go back and validate this work to be true. So we had some good spot checking there. Jason, if you'll toggle back to the master slide. So the master slide then summarizes this by grade band and then offers a cost for each one of these items. So if you look at the first section, elementary, you'll see that if you had added up the number of faucets, for example, across all of our 20-some elementary schools, you'd have seen that we believe we need to repair 17 of those. They cost about $250 each, giving that price tag of $4,250 for the division. And you can scroll across for each one of these different work order needs, see what the total is for the division. Bobby and his team's best quote on the price for that work and then the total. So we need about $267,000 for the work across elementary schools, about $363,000 for the work across our middle, and about 311 for high schools, and about $70,000 for preschool, $75,000 for the specialty. So you'll see the total is about a little under $1.1 million. If you scroll down to line 38, we did put in an estimated labor cost. And this would be if we worked exclusively with contractors at an accelerated rate in order to be able to open school as quickly as possible at some time in second semester. Do you want to acknowledge that the likelihood of all of this work being done in time for a February 8th opening would be slim, although the work could be prioritized? This evening, you approved a $1.5 million budget transfer to begin this work. And so that covers the total cost of the work, plus some cost of the labor so that we can get started. But also, in the chance that we choose to remain virtual a bit longer, our own facilities, staff and custodial staff, of course, can begin to pick up some of the heavy lift for this work. Um, I think I'll pause there for questions, and Bobby is here and can answer specifics that folks might have about the assessment or what some of the work might mean.
I do not see, but I'm gonna wait a minute. Because I know sometimes, all right, here we go, Mr. Young.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, big thanks to Michelle and to Bobby. So as it relates to prioritization of the of the projects, one, for the chronological purposes that you referenced, Michelle, and just just not being able to do everything at once, but also then from the budget perspective, we appropriated about the money we we need this evening. Though I'm going to presume, I could probably, well, maybe I shouldn't presume, but for this board member, I'd love to to prioritize that other 1.5 million ASAP. So we can, we can address those other bathroom needs. But as it relates to prioritization, there's a question for my colleagues that will partly be determined, perhaps.
Jonathan, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to clarify, that's not an additional 1.9. That's an additional nine. And tonight you you allocated 1.5. So we would be $400,000 short of contractors doing it all. So I think we've allocated likely enough money towards this project tonight. Because I do think we can split the work between contractors and RPS staff. So I just wanted to clarify, we weren't another 2 million away.
Got it. No, that's, well, that's extraordinarily helpful and and perhaps makes some some of my comments or question. But in still in regards to just prioritization. Then needless to say, at the risk of stating the obvious, it's going to largely be dependent on what we do next month at that at that meeting. But and in between now and and then I don't anticipate that there will be a large sum of this work done, or am I in error? Do you do you expect, I mean, granted, we've got Thanksgiving coming up, so I'm not sure how much of this work would be done. Where I'm going with this is, it would seem to me to to given some of the advice that Danny provided us earlier, it may make sense to prioritize from a chronological perspective, some of the elementary work. But but again, that's all subject to what we agree to at the next meeting. So just a few thoughts, thinking out loud, that's all.
My only other comment around prioritization might be to examine that level one versus level two. So you'll see that some of the things in the general contractor section, such as the painting or the mirrors, while those are certainly bars we want to hold for this work and for our students. I do think we might also prioritize some of the things around level one for sinks and toilets that may be in have limited functionality right now. But your point is well taken around grade bands, too. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Page?
Thank you, but my question was answered.
Okay.
In Michelle's comments.
All right, I do not see others. So you can move along, Ms. Udesco.
Okay. And so then I'd ask Jason if you could open document. So the second document is around the air quality. And you may recall that was another measure of our school readiness that we wanted to examine. And that was what it would take to equip our both our classrooms and common spaces with appropriate filtration systems in place. I'm actually going to turn it over to Bobby right from the start on this one, because he'll be able to better explain what columns B through I are on this chart, which are different types of filtration systems that exist in our building. So Bobby, we appreciate your expertise here, kind of talking us through what that means. And Bobby, you may be unmute.
You are.
Is that better?
Yes.
All right, cool. All right, thanks, Michelle.
You're a little quiet, though.
Okay.
You're a little quiet.
Is that better?
Yeah.
We'll try that. So the first column, the VAV boxes, that's a variable air volume system. So that's a centralized air conditioning heating system in the building that relies on a main source, like an air handler on the rooftop or in a mechanical room that provides the heat or air conditioning to the building. That's the the latest technology. That's the most advanced technology. That's what we have in the three new schools. So that's one of the easier platforms to incorporate this bipolar ionization throughout the district. So that that very, that one right there, the VAV boxes, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take those, or we can move on through and then come back.
Why don't you go through each of them briefly, just what that is, and then we can orient folks to the spreadsheet?
Sure. So the fan core units mounted on the floor. So throughout the district, we have various different HVAC systems based on the age of the buildings and what was the easiest to install when we incorporated air conditioning in some of the facilities. So the fan core units, in this case, it's identifies the ones that are located on the floor. It basically provides the heat or air conditioning to the space, to the classroom, of the hallway, of the cafeteria, whatever the case may be. It also includes pressure makeup to the space. And this particular unit is where we would install a bipolar ionization device. So then if we go to the fan core units located in the ceiling, likewise, that's a unit that's located into ceiling. It operates, again, it provides cold air, warm air to the space in the classroom. We would incorporate the device here. It brings in fresh air as well, and that's how we maintain the temperature in the space. Unfortunately, we do have window units throughout the district. And in many cases, this is what we would have to do, incorporate this bipolar ionization device in the window unit to provide cleaner air for those spaces. Unfortunately, we would have to just run the fan on the window unit in the wintertime to provide the cleaner air and the ionization device to be incorporated in this unit. Many of the schools have heat pump units. So in those cases, we would actually locate the bipolar ionization device in the heat pump unit for our classroom. And that's pretty self-explanatory. It takes care of just the individualized classroom, the office, or the other areas in the building. In some cases, we have mini splits. So that's a ductless unit that provides air conditioning just to the space. We would incorporate the bipolar ionizations in those units. Those would actually operate throughout the year in summer and wintertime. In the wintertime, we would only be operating the fan in there just to incorporate the ionization device. And then the chill beam, that is only at Huguenat High School. That's the latest technology. That's the only school with that technology. And that's a little bit different system. So we would have to include the bipolar ionization device throughout the building and those devices to take care of the classrooms and the office and the surrounding areas. And then in some cases, we do have rooftop air handling units. The last, I think it's the last item, at least that's what I'm seeing on my screen. So we would incorporate this ionization device and those units. Typically, these are either mounted on the rooftop or on the exterior of the building, on the side of the building, and they're ducted into the building. And that gives us the capability to, and that's most of the time that's used in either cafeterias or the gymnasiums or auditoriums and things like that.
Thanks, Bobby. And then folks will see for each of those, you can scroll over to the estimated cost, how much this unit costs when used with the particular air system. So the costs by school are down the right-hand column. You'll see our three new schools are not listed as they have this technology already in them. You'll also see that we embedded a $500,000 contingency. And that is especially for the window units that Bobby mentioned. Unfortunately, many of our classrooms, and you can see the number, still have window units. This doesn't work if you put a unit in a failing window unit. So this also allows for some of the replacement that may be needed as this work is done. So the total cost is around $5.5 million. We have some CIP dollars that should the board want to move in this direction, we will bring a proposal on December 7th on how to reprioritize remaining CIP dollars for this work. So we'll pause here for questions about the air quality and confirm the board's interest in a proposal for financing this work.
Mr. Young?
Well, in regards to the latter, this one vote, I would be very much in favor of expediting the work. And that pertains actually to what my question regards, and specifically, if if you and Bobby have any kind of idea, assuming we appropriate the dollars, how long it would take to to complete this work, what that looks like?
Yeah, right now, Jonathan, we, it's about a six to an eight-week lead time on the actual devices itself. So that would put us sometime into January before we could actually get our hands on the devices. And then our estimate to have everything installed would be sometime towards springtime around Easter, or or sometime in the middle part of April, something like that.
Thank you both.
Right, Ms. Page?
Thank you for this presentation. But I do have a question. So in particular, the fairly new schools in the eighth district. Well, United is in the fourth, but we feed into the eighth. But my question is, around Borrock, or Grobelmead, so. Um, O'Grove Bell Mead, so so this is for the air quality. So I guess I'm trying to gather in my mind, since those schools are fairly new, there are still, there were still some structural or you know, what am I missing here?
Um, so Donna, I'm I'm very familiar with Broad Rock and Oak Grove, and um so basically what we're looking at doing is um, there's the equipment that's there, we would be incorporating a um, an ionization device into the piece of equipment on the rooftop, which would provide cleaner, fresher air to the space and prevent or work against COVID or any other viruses and bacteria. So um, go ahead.
So I guess because of climate that we are in, that's something that was not, you know, part of the construction or the air quality. You know, with COVID.
Well, none of the systems that we currently have um were prepared for COVID. However, um, the three new schools, um, they're going to go ahead and install that in the three new schools, but that's
Oh, okay.
Just hit the surface, so um it, Oak Grove and Broad Rock is no different than the three new schools, other than if we incorporate this new technology, we'll still have the same devices installed.
Okay. I got it. I'm I'm clear now.
All right.
Can I ask you, Bobby, if you can just elaborate a little bit on this device and what it does?
Sure, um. The device itself is an electronic device that's wired into the uh piece of equipment, whether it's a fan coil unit, whether it's a rooftop unit, or whether it's a um uh heat pump unit. So basically, um, as the unit operates, it will create ions. Um, and the ions get distributed into the airstream into the classroom or the area that's being served, whether it's the office or gym. And through the study, it it indicates that um it actually attacks the airborne particles, um, which helps it prevent those from being distributed in the space and um basically breaks those down before it makes it into the classroom or the other areas and creates a safer environment.
And this is all viruses, all bacteria, not just COVID?
No, it's not just COVID. It's so it is effective against mold, it's effective against viruses and bacteria. So i- if we decide to go this direction, um, it will be beneficial in in other facets.
Thank you.
Okay. Bobby, I gave you a little diagram in case you wanted to talk. Basically, this little thing right here is the ionization unit. Heard Bobby talk about the air handler, so it ionizes the air before it gets into the space.
Absolutely.
And and one of the benefits over uh more traditional filtration systems is you never have to replace it. There's no filter.
Okay.
Um, and they have a 15, 20-year lifecycle, which is also nice because that allows us to use capital dollars to pay for them.
This is helpful.
Thanks for that visualization, Jason. That was good.
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Well, I was a teacher too, so oh, well.
I don't see any other questions at this time. So
Ms. Owen?
I have one quick question, and that is this five and a half million dollars, we don't really have that sitting around right now, do we, even in our C I P funds?
Well, we have some projects which we have not yet done, and so we might be able to reallocate funds. Uh, we had, you know, when COVID hit somewhat judiciously, um, a- and and also because we weren't able to do a lot of things when COVID hit, press paused on some projects, um, knowing that we would likely need to make some adjustments given COVID. So we're working with the city to get their uh October 1 um balance uh reconciliation, and so at the December 7th meeting, we can bring forward to you exactly what our balances are, what projects are done and what haven't been done yet, and we could potentially reallocate towards this work and and then give you a clear picture of of what we have and what we don't have.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing I was going to ask is if the board wouldn't mind jumping to the J C T update while we have Bobby here, in case there are any questions on that. I apologize for not thinking of that earlier. Um, but while he is here, there might be questions about the Thompson Building.
I if you have an objection, would you put it quickly in the chat? Otherwise, we'll go with that. I don't see any objections, Mr. Hathaway. Please go forward.
Okay, I will, um, let me get that up and I'll walk everybody through it, and then Bobby can answer any of the specifics, so bear with me one second. Okay, uh, well, the the short story on um on on Marsh and Cardinal, uh, we have the certificates of occupancy, the temporary certificates of occupancy. Uh, there are still a number of punch list items, painting, caulking, some minor fixture work, and the deep cleaning still needs to happen. Uh, we did do an initial walkthrough of uh Marsh uh last week. Um, still a number of punch list items uh to be completed. Um, and uh they are working assiduously on those. Um, and then in terms of demolition, uh, both the old Mason and the old Green are on track to begin uh in early 2021, which is uh as scheduled, they're doing the initial uh work to scope everything out in preparation for those demolitions. On River City, also, we now have the temporary certificate of occupancy. They too have some punch list items and uh some uh more significant ones, some tile work, and there's some edging on the auditorium stage. Um, so they are working on those as well. The the big item here that I wanted to bring to the board is what to do with the Thompson Building. Uh, the administration is recommending that we uh actually move forward with demolition of the Thompson Building at this time. Uh, let me give you a little bit of context. First, that would cost about $650,000. That's uh the best estimate that we have received at this time. Uh, though I know that is a significant cost, um, there are several reasons why we think it's important to move forward. First, we do not believe that building is fit for student or staff use any longer. Uh, its roof, boilers, chiller, cooling tower are all well beyond their life expectancy. Some are already failing. Uh, and by raising the facility, uh, we'd be in a position to build a new middle school on that site if and when uh the system feels that is necessary. In addition, by doing it now, it's technically part of the River City project, which means we can go ahead and use uh the meals tax funds for this purpose, so we're not eat into our other C I P funds. Um, I do want to note there would still be a balance uh that would be sufficient for the design of George With, so I want to make sure that that is clear. Um, and we would be able to do the demolition. Um, obviously, a lot rides on our decision about second semester, but if we were to remain virtual, uh, we'd be able to do the demolition when no students were present at Huguenot, which would be a benefit as well. Finally, though, there is a cost to demolition, there's also a cost to not demolishing the site. About $60,000 upfront to board up the building and take other measures that would be necessary. Then an ongoing cost of about $100,000 a year in utilities and other costs. And then the the leak, the roof is already leaking, and if we don't address that, uh, there's the potential for mold and other damage. Um, repairing that could cost upwards of a million dollars, which seems like it's throwing a lot of money um after something that uh may not be worth it. So uh, that's our recommendation at this point. Uh, we would like to uh move somewhat swiftly on this as uh the other projects are um in the works in terms of demolition, and so wanted to bring this in front of the board swiftly. Uh, Bobby, anything you would add in terms of the the Thompson site?
Now, I think you covered everything, Jason, and um it is just, it is critical that um that we do make a decision because we are going to have to maintain it one way or the other. Uh, to your point, you know, the roof is actively leaking um in in an area, so we would have to take care of that and try to protect it as much as possible.
Okay, um, Mr. Young, then Ms. Burke, and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you.
Mr. Young, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. All right, go right ahead, Jonathan.
Uh, Cheryl, you can go, uh, uh, go ahead. Okay, okay. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, the current building is located in the fourth. Um, I've long uh been very uh clear about uh my um uh community's interest in seeing that uh that site raised for all the reasons uh that were articulated this evening, including uh the fact that it is an opportunity uh going forward, once once the current building is down, to consider uh a um, consider that space for it for a new school, but but also because of the other cost savings uh measures that the superintendent identified. Uh, so um I wholeheartedly endorse the administration's proposal uh to proceed now for all the reasons that um were so well articulated. Thank you.
Ms. Burke, and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I concur with what uh Mr. Young just stated as well. Being mindful that we inherited that building when Richmond and the county annex. Be mindful that it wasn't a well-built school to begin with. Be mindful also that we need to get away from patching and patching and patching. It's evident that mold is there, it's evident that the air system isn't up to par, it's evident that the roof system isn't in place. What I like about the opportunity to demolish it now is that we don't have to reach into funds otherwise, that we can stay where we are and have this as a part of the River City project, as the superintendent stated. So I'm all in favor of demolishing this building as a part of that package so that we can move forward, have beautiful school green space until we do build another middle school. So I am in favor, and um it's been a pleasure working on the J C T committee and hearing all the ins and outs with Mr. Hath- Hathaway and the administration and others that at this time, this is the right time to move forward and do away with that building, raise it as Jonathan Young stated. Thank you.
Ms. Page.
Yes, I share the same sentiments as my colleague and from prior experience experiences, lessons learned. If we leave that building up, then it just becomes an eyesore to the community and because we have we have a couple of buildings that probably, no, that should have been demolished when we built the new Oak Grove Bell Mead and Broad Rock. Broad Rock, the old Broad Rock was demolished, but um some other building that we did close in 2012, it should have been demolished as well, because just as you stated, Ms. Burke, we need to stop doing these Band-Aid fixes to our schools that our children are entering that's supposed to be conducive for learning. We need to stop that. So I'm all in favor of the administration's recommendation turned down. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll add one more. Um, you didn't mention about it becoming an attractive nuisance. Where the next thing you know, you've got people who are breaking into it and partying and doing all kinds of things. So so I know this is not an action item, but I believe if we have a motion for a vote uh tonight, we can go ahead and take action. So do any of them?
Jonathan wanted that as for
I think Jonathan wanted to do that because it was his district.
That's a South Side situation.
Now, let's give the Jonathan the motion and Ms. Page the uh second. How about that?
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded that we proceed with the demolition as the administration has recommended. I'm looking to see if we have anything else in regards to this motion. I'm not seeing anything. Giving you time. Okay, Ms. Wilson, let's go ahead and have a vote on the motion, please.
Um, just for clarity, Madam Chair, Mr. Young, would you like to include in your motion the demolition of the Thompson Building?
Uh, yes, ma'am, same move.
Thank you. And that motion was made by Mr. Young and seconded by Mrs. Page.
That is correct.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mrs. Page.
Yes.
Mrs. Cosby.
Yes.
Mrs. Door.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mrs. Gibson.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
And Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes. All right, terrific. So now I think Mr. Hathaway, you can you can leave. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Bobby.
All right.
All right. So are we done now with the decision-making process so far? Michelle? Are we ready to move on to our update on goal two?
Yes, those are are um we have the survey review, Danny's data, and the facility. So if there are no other questions, that is all of the data we're bringing this evening for the process.
Thank you. In that case, we'll move on to goal two graduation. I believe this is Dr. Epp.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, Board Chair Owen, Vice Chair Burke, Superintendent, Cameras, and School Board. Um, I I'm excited to report out some of our data around our graduation goal. Um, of course, uh, it's hard to talk about graduation um without thinking about all the different pieces that factor into our graduation goal. Um, so just to start with a bit of historical context, in 2018, in the summer of 2018, we, uh, at the request of the administration, the V D O E conducted an audit of our high school transcripts, and as you will likely recall, as a result of that audit, a number of concerning practices and procedures were identified, um, all of which really uh impact students' ability to graduate on time. I I would also say, as well as students, um, uh, the feasibility of students to see a viable path to graduation in a reasonable amount of time. These included things such as um, the schedules of the available courses being aligned to a board-approved program of study, um, failure to secure board approval for local courses. Many of our English learners taking uh their full ninth and 10th grade year with coursework that did not count towards any graduation requirements. Um, and you'll s- and and um, those are students that are still in the system, those freshmen who were freshmen in, you know, 2017 would have just are just finishing up, right? So um that we still have students that were affected by these. Um, we saw the um sort of misuse of uh the standard diploma as the default for students at our comprehensive high schools, uh, as opposed to the advanced diploma being the default for students at our specialty schools. And just as a reminder, uh, the advanced diploma uh has requirements that most colleges really require to be competitive for admissions. Um, there was an overuse of the applied studies diploma for students with an I E P. Um, this is not in fact a um, does not count towards a, it's not the same as a high school diploma, and that um, it can make students ineligible for post-secondary study. Um, and, you know, preemptively using lower caliber alternative assessments to meet verified credit requirements. Uh, all of these challenges, um, certainly not only impacted the via of veracity of our transcripts, but um you can certainly, I think, see a clear um impact on graduation rates. As a result of these findings, beginning that fall in the 1819 school year, we began tackling these issues by um making sure our program of studies was comprehensive, accurate, complete, and board-approved, along with locally and board-approved, along with locally-developed courses. We revamped our high school courses for student supports for English language learners to make sure those weren't lost credits, if you will. We established really clear guidelines for scheduling and monitoring those guidelines so that students were taking courses that were advancing them towards graduation within four years. We adjusted the default diploma setting to advanced rather than standard. We began monitoring the use of Applied Studies diplomas and requiring documentation to justify this designation. We established division-wide reviews and approval processes for locally-awarded verified credits. We, you know, continued these practices and in effect, we, as a result of these, we essentially no longer were rubber-stamping our diplomas. And because of this, our graduation rate fell from 75.4% in 1718 to 70.7% in 1819. And though our rate is still very unacceptable, we are now trending up and trending up with the right, I would say, guardrails in place where our diploma means something. So we believe that dark period of time is, is over from, and students can really have a very clear chance at a on-time graduation. So from 2018 to 1920, we saw a slight increase, but an increase nonetheless, from 70.7% to 71.6%. So almost a full point. Some of our highlights, in addition to increasing our overall dropout, overall graduation rate, is we decreased our dropout rate as well. Most notably, Armstrong High School increased its graduation rate by 11 percentage points and decreased its dropout rate by 10 percentage points. RAS also increased its graduation rate by double digits and decreased its dropout rate by double digits. One, one note I want to make on RAS, we do, students who attend the Virginia Virtual Academy are coded to RAS, so this year was their first senior class. So some of that could be impacted, some of that increase could be attributed to that student enrollment, but not exclusively. We also saw John Marshall High School and Thomas Jefferson High School improve their graduation rates and decrease their dropout rates. This is one that I'm particularly excited about. We increased the percentage of students earning an advanced diploma by nine percentage points, including doubling the percentage of students with an IEP earning an advanced diploma. And we launched three new graduation and dropout recovery slash prevention programs to respond to the concerns inherent in our graduation data, with a particular focus on our Hispanic Latino students. Our concerns, our graduation rate remains the lowest in the Commonwealth as our dropout rate remains the highest. We believe we are on track to change this and we are very focused on changing this, but it is still a grave concern. George With experienced a significant drop in its graduation rate and an increase in its dropout rate. And Huguenot High School also experienced a slight drop in its graduation rate. And the, just overall, the graduation rate for our Hispanic and Latino students is extremely concerning.
Tracy, is there something ruffling by you? We're hearing some feedback.
No, I, I'll try to, maybe it's my volume button. Try that again. It may have been my dog. I apologize. My dog walked in the room. Do you still hear it?
It sounds like white noise, but it's gone now.
Okay.
Or not.
Apologies. So just to give you an overview of the graduation rate year over year by school, again, you can see some of the dramatic gains made at our high schools. And again, across the division, almost a full percentage point. You can also see the two schools where we experienced a drop. And then by subgroup, this is where, again, just to reinforce our concerns, across four of our subgroups, we saw an increase, whereas we saw a decrease in our subgroup, particularly our Hispanic, Latino, and English learner.
Tracy, we, we've lost you. We've lost you.
Oh, goodness. That's so weird. Okay.
Now you're back. I think there might be an issue with your audio.
Okay. Is that any better?
That's good.
Okay, so strange. Uh, so you can see the graduation rate by subgroup. Again, you can see the areas of increases and again, the concerns we have around supporting our Hispanic and Latino and English learner students in on-time graduation. In terms of our dropout rate, and just as a reminder, the dropout rate is not the inverse of the on-time graduation rate. The dropout, the on-time graduation rate is the number of students who graduate from high school in four years from when they first enrolled as freshmen. The dropout rate is, are the, if you take the students who were freshmen four years ago, are they still, did they graduate or are they still enrolled in school? So if a student is still enrolled, but they're a fifth-year senior, it does, it, it does not count against our dropout rate. So these are students who we have effectively lost over their four-year high school career by cohort. So again, you can see significant improvement across all of our schools with one exception. And I would say slight improvement in Huguenot, but, you know, significant improvement at Armstrong, RAS, Thomas Jefferson, and again, just the RAS point, is some of that is impacted by the BABA students who were seniors this first, for the first time last year. You can see our dropout rate by subgroup, so making progress in all but two areas, the same areas of concern. And these have really led to, these rates have really, well, one more, one more data set before we get into the so what here. This is the data I was referring to in terms of successes. We increased our percent of advanced diplomas by almost 10 percentage points. And we doubled, sorry, we decreased the number of Applied Studies diplomas by five points. And our students with an IEP, we doubled the number of those students also earning an advanced diploma, proving that students, just because a student has an IEP, does not mean we lower expectations, but rather we provide supports for those students to achieve their goals. In terms of what are we doing about this data? You know, our work around our graduation strategy is three parts. It is making sure that our current seniors are on track to graduate on time, whether that is by the end of the traditional school year in June or through summer graduation. So that means working with our counselors to really look at every single student's transcript, their schedule, and making sure whatever it is that they need, coursework, verified credits, credentials, and really monitoring our current seniors. So this is our current 2021 cohort that we are looking at every week. Part two is our dropout recovery, so looking at our students in our 2021 cohort who we've lost and, and making sure we're providing them a path. One of the things we learned last year when we put some time and energy, some really robust energy into this, was it wasn't enough just to get kids to come back. We had to give them something different to come back to. And this is what led to building the Student Success Center and some of the other alternative pathways. And then part three is really prevent, getting ahead of this sort of cycle here and preventing students. So starting to look at ninth and 10th and 11th graders who are high-risk because they might be overage, undercredited, they may have failed an important course like algebra. And so working earlier with those students, not waiting until senior year to prevent. And, and we believe we're already seeing some of the benefits of this three-part strategy. I would say in particular, all of these have a targeted focus for our English learner and Hispanic students. And so specifically, I'd like to recap the programs we've launched for this group of students, given what we've learned from our students and families and teachers about, about what our students need. So first, I launched this fall the Conganis Academy, which means with determination in Spanish, is for our English learners who are 17 or older. And it provides intensive English language and academic support to ensure students can graduate within three years or less, giving students the belief that it is possible. If you're 17 or older and you do not have a lot of credits, you know, it's hard to believe that it's worth your time going to high school if you don't really see a clear path. And this program gives students a very clear path. We have 57 students currently enrolled in the Conganis Academy and continuing to enroll kids every day. Next, we also this fall launched the Newcomer Academy, and this is for our newly-arrived immigrant English learner students ages 14 to 17 who have been in the country for less than a year. And again, this is a project-based, bilingual-based instructional model where students receive instruction that helps them accelerate their English acquisition, improve literacy in their native language, and ultimately graduate with an advanced diploma. Students here also receive services that help them acclimate to school in the United States and really understand how to navigate the system. We have 189th and 10th graders currently enrolled in this academy. And then the last, we actually started the Student Success Center in, in the February, right before COVID hit. And this is for students who've stopped coming to school. And when we go out and we, we talk to those students, we say, hey, come back and let us help you figure out a way to complete your diploma through a unique program. And this is really designed to meet the needs of adult learners and to make participation very convenient. So we have flexible programming and time, we have evening courses, we have mentors, and it also includes individualized academic and career counseling as well. We have 51 students in this program. Additionally, right now, sort of phase two of our graduation work continuing for this cohort, we have something called a, we are expanding the sort of students we are watching and working hand-in-glove with our schools on a weekly basis to make sure that as soon as we see a need, we are aligning an intervention related to graduation. And here on the left, you can see different groups of students that we are developing supports for, monitoring, working with our community liaison, our community hubs and our parent liaisons to pull kids back in. When we do get them back in, we align the supports and interventions, be that, you know, evening school academies for SOLs for students to earn their verified credits, a personalized support plan, out-of-school time support, whatever the student needs, our team is working with, with our schools to match students up with that need. And again, we do, we're progress monitoring where every other week, both Mr. Hughes and I meet with all of our high school principals and counselors against this watch list of students to make sure we're doing outreach and support. And then for our two schools that have the greatest challenge, particularly related to our English learners, is in Huguenot and With, and we meet weekly with that team to really dive deep to make sure we are supporting those two schools with, with more time and guidance. And I would say, while we have still so much more work to do, we are seeing some of our, those efforts that we began last year began to pay off. And so what I mean by this is, looking at our dropout rate, for example, our current cohort is the 2021 cohort. And what we look at is when we lose students. And so over the course of a four-year high school period, we lose students all throughout that time. It's not like they just get to senior year and they stop coming, right? We actually lose the majority of our students every, between every June and September. So what we did is, we looked at, we looked at where our, our 2021 students are right now, who was currently enrolled in school as of November 12. And typically, we can hang on to kiddos. If we have them for their senior year, we can hang on to them. And so even if they're going to be a fifth-year graduate or a summer school graduate, we can keep them in school typically. And so this, this looks at, you know, essentially where we are today in November, we are all right, all of our schools, with one exception, is trending towards a significant improvement in their dropout rate compared to where we were this time last year. And so I'll just, that's, the appendix is there if you're still wondering what the difference is between on-time graduation and dropout rate, but happy to take questions. I'll just close by saying, this work is, we have much important work to do in RPS, but this work is, I would say, among our most important work. And I, I do believe that we have worked to put things in place with our school staff. I think we're going to really see the needle continue to move over the next couple of years for RPS and get to one of the highest graduation rates in the Commonwealth over the next several years. So looking forward to that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Epp, for that extremely detailed presentation. I am looking in the chat. I feel like doing the Jeopardy song, you know, dee-dee-dee-dee-dee-dee-dee, but I don't see anybody with a question or a comment up. Now I do. First Ms. Burke and then Ms. Page. And then, then some more.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, Dr. Epp, thank you so very much. It's evident that you've worked very hard. I feel better this year than I did previously. Glad to see the gains with Armstrong in terms of graduate, graduation rate and decrease in dropout. And RAS, unbelievably, that's, I shouldn't say unbelievably, because that's, that's where I'm getting ready, the direction in which I'm getting ready to move. So we think in terms, this is for the future. You know, I don't like the idea of being at the bottom. And I know the administration has worked so hard, teachers are working so hard, but we continue to play catch-up. At some point in time, whether it is, as Mrs. Cosby always states, extended, not extended day, but to the point where it's a year-round school, we're going to have to step outside of the box. And this is, it's just not our system, even though we're at the bottom with that. Because of COVID, other, other school districts are also talking about extending their calendar year. But we're going to have to do something different, whether it's a specialty school. You know, we look at our data for specialty schools and we see zero, 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 zero. When we look at our heavily-populated schools, high schools that's teaching everybody, I, I, my concern is that we're going to have to do something different. It bothers me greatly, and I'm sure all of us, in regards to our Hispanic population. Two or three years, we're going to have to think of something outside of the box. And I'm, I'm ready and willing to consider being realistic, not to place, but, but to meet them where they are, which I know our teachers are trying to do. But we may need to think at some point and have a heart-to-heart gathering, brainstorming session, bring together the community, particularly all of the Hispanic community, and find out what we're missing, because we're, I know we're playing catch-up. And I feel for a student being of that age in early high school. It doesn't fit. So eventually, what are you going to do but drop out? And we have to avoid that, because we don't win until all of our children win. So at some point, not putting it on you now, I appreciate the increase in data. I, that's great. But it's not great that students are still lagging so far behind. So I hope at some point our administration, Mr. Camaras, maybe for next school year or as we move forward, can entertain the idea of putting together a specialty school, a specialty program within a school, as Jonathan always says, a school within a school, something different in terms of truly supporting, we may start out with a small group. something different in terms of truly supporting, we may start out with a small group. And I, I'm sure we'll see an increase, because we'll, we'll be meeting our students' needs in smaller groups, giving them more attention, and giving them what they need. So right now, in the schools with over seven hundred students, eight hundred students, lots of movement. I think we need to rethink this and catch them before they even get to the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades. They may have to start at middle school and then just go ahead and having them, like we do in Franklin Military. You start out there, you can go elsewhere, but you have the option of continuing on. Because that's also part of the relationship piece. That's, that's hard. That's, that's, we're expecting a lot. But I thank you for your report. I was glad to hear what you stated about IEPs, because some of the smartest, most wealthiest people in our United States of America were students that had individual plans or needed to have, and they made it. They made it, because someone did push them and believed in them. So I'm glad to hear that that number has gone up. So that's a plus for that department. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you. I do want to emphasize, we're not waiting in terms of specialized programs. So we've launched since February, we've, even in the midst of launching virtual school and COVID and all of that, we've launched three dedicated programs, two of which are specifically designed to support our English learners and Latino students. With the Newcomer Academy, that's already underway. The Conganis Academy already underway. We even, you know, expanded the number of slots to say, we're not turning any student away from the Success Center, Conganis, and the Newcomer Academy. We also, the Newcomer Academy, sorry, includes eighth graders if they're fourteen. And we're in the process of, we will soon be launching a middle school program for students who are already over age in middle school. Because we know sending a baby to high school at sixteen as a freshman is setting them up for failure. So we are being very aggressive on designing these programs. And then the other thing I'll just make a small connection to, we haven't had a lot of time to talk about this lately, but our passion for learning work as part of one point one, you know, it is designed to do kind of what you talked about in a lot of ways, which is, how do we reimagine the way school kids experience school? So that it is something that ignites their passion and excitement. So I think both of those things will help push us forward.
I look forward to seeing the data.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Page, then Mr. Young, Ms. Gibson, and Ms. Cosby. So Ms. Page.
Thank you, Dr. Epp, for this information. I share some of the same sentiment as my colleague, Ms. Burke, and I'm sure the rest of the colleagues around this virtual meeting. But I have three additional questions. So with the dropout prevention strategy, you know, the early warning signs, so from a board perspective, in seeing progress, you know, and looking at that data, is that something we can, we should, I guess, hone in on quarterly? Or, I'm just trying to figure out, we need to see an update, how, you know, the progress of the students that have been identified, you know, that have these early warning signs, that, hey, we need to catch them now. So I want to see, is that data you think is better, you know, received on a quarterly basis, you know, to get an update? To see, because that will, you know, track the progress of our students, you know, with on-time graduation rate, I mean, just, period.
Yes, quarterly, I think, is enough time to see the numbers move. I mean, the big effort typically happens in the first quarter. Is where you see some of the biggest movement, but be happy to report updated as, as, as requested by the board.
Okay. And then my next question, with identifying or, I know I saw in the presentation that we have students that have been targeted, you know, that have dropped out. So the baseline data, what do we, where do we start? What was the starting point?
Meaning how many students are currently not, currently dropped out in the twenty-twenty-one cohort?
Yeah, how were they identified and, or, you know, targeted students, you know, do we know where they're located?
We do. So for, let me just, yes, we do. So for the cohort twenty-twenty-one, which are the students who started high school four years ago as ninth graders, that we have, we have the total, there's a, what's the denominator is the total number of students who started as high school students.
Right.
And then who we still have enrolled as of last Friday, okay? And so based on that, we have that, we have those numbers by school. And we, you know, work with our counselors and principals to validate those numbers. So to, I can give you, I can give you an example. For example, right now, in, let's say, a school like Huguenot, there are forty-three students out of three hundred and twenty-five that are, that we need to reengage. So they're not in school. So that's an example. But I could certainly give you more information at an updated, at the, you know, another time.
Okay. And then my last question, and I figured that was, you know, you identified school by school, the students that we know we need to reach out to. The GED, what's the rationale behind why we don't count them in the graduation rate?
Well, it's the state's formula. And so there's, there's several different numbers that the state reports. There's a completer. So a GED counts as a completer, but not an on-time graduation rate. The on-time graduation rate just takes into account board-approved diplomas. So, and, and four years. If you are there, if you're an English language learner or a student with an IEP, depending on your IEP, you may have a fifth year to count for still being on time. So the state makes a distinction between a completer. But the big rate that we're used to seeing that the state reports is the on-time graduation rate, which only includes board-approved diplomas.
So when a student earns their GED and say they were a part of the Richmond Public School System, who is credited with that, you know, with that, the GED, the student receiving that GED?
So that would be, we would be credited as part of our completer data, depending on the year.
Okay.
And then, yeah, so or if a student transferred to another district during their high school time, they left ours and went somewhere else, it would be that school.
So we get the credit, but not as a part of the on-time graduation rate?
Correct. Again, some of it, the years in which cohort you live in is some of the, the kind of funny algorithm. So I don't want to be imprecise, but generally, that's the idea.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can talk more offline.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first Cheryl addressed a lot of the questions that I had. But, but I did have, on, on the subject, did have a talent acquisition question for Dr. Lee and just wanted to inquire how we're, how we're doing in regards to hiring folks that have a, a second language proficiency and/or some training competency pertinent to, to our L students and ESL, et cetera. I know we obviously receive regular updates, but I thought it'd be appropriate to just inquire now where, where we're at. And, and if, obviously, we've invested a lot of resources in, in hiring folks with specific competencies in the last couple of years. And I, I know we intend to do more of that, but just where, where we're at in identifying talent for, for the district.
Sure, Mr. Young. So we do have ESL as a priority in recruiting. In fact, that's something that we recently discussed with the academic team. Getting T-Soul endorsed teachers is a priority, not just for English language learners, but really T-Soul strategies that teachers utilize in the classroom are just great teaching strategies. In terms of the, the actual numbers, I do not have those right now, but I'm happy to report back to you and to the board in the future regarding the recruitment of T-Soul endorsed teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson and then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the presentation. I, I think that the distinction with the decrease in students that are receiving the Applied Studies diploma is an important one. And, and I, I appear in the, in the deck, it's, you're noting specifically the, the decrease for exceptional education students. What is the overall, you know, district-wide, what is the, the drop we've seen in the number of, the percentage drop in, in Applied Studies diplomas?
So the percentage of exceptional education students receiving an Applied Studies diploma dropped from thirty-seven point nine percent to thirteen point four percent. Overall, it was, it was seven percent of overall diplomas. And that went down to two percent of overall diplomas. But if you just look at the subgroup, it was a pretty dramatic drop, about twenty-six points.
Right. Okay, thank you. And, you know, focusing more on our English language learners, you know, I think that, you know, as we are thinking about, you know, you know, rates and numbers and data, and I, and I think that's all really valuable to look at, but, but, but I really think, you know, what's underneath the data are, are people and experiences and I, you know, and I, and I guess what I'd like to know is, you know, I mean, you know, we have some programs in place and I, and I'm, and I'm encouraged about those. But I wonder, you know, what is the social reality for these students in the schools? And how are we learning about those experiences? And, you know, because it seems very clear that, you know, there are, there are likely things that need to be supported in, in the schools that aren't perhaps not academic, but, but, but to address, you know, the culture and the climate of the building that I think for, for these students could very well be a huge factor in, you know, in, in their, you know, in, in opting to stay and graduate.
Absolutely. And those are conversations we are having with schools. You know, we're not just having conversations about numbers, we're talking about actual students. And I would say the, the student stories is what's led to the, some of the features in the programs we've added. You know, I think Mr. Cameras said in RPS Live about a month ago with some of our students in the Conganis Academy. And I think there's much more listening and learning to be done. But I, I do believe that some of our supports have been directly informed by the stories we've heard from students. And again, not just the special, these alternative programs, but to your point, creating space for principals and their staff to reflect on what might be happening in the building as well, in terms of welcoming, a welcoming and inclusive environment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Epp. I am glad that we have finally received this report. As I mentioned to my fellow school board members and school board chair, that this traditionally is presented in October when the results come out. And I was just a bit disheartened to find out about our standing in the Richmond Free Press as opposed to a formal report. Anyway, but that being said, kudos on the work that's being done right now to address some of these issues. I would like to see one, a five-year trend, a slide, five-year trend data in terms of, you did it from two thousand, what is it, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty? But would like to see just the five-year trend for on-time graduation rates. And also, I think with the success story at Armstrong, it is a lesson for us. And on, on several levels. And one of them, when you look at strong building leadership, and when you look at a team that has coalesced, and that for, for the most part, they, they've been together and they've gone, grown stronger. And, and would like to get some, some data on that in terms of the, the percentage of teachers who have been at Armstrong, how long you've been there. Because I think this is something that we do need to look at across the board. You know, there are significant gains there. And, and there's a lot going on that we, we should be proud of across the board, but I, I think when you just look at the, the numbers, it does beg a deeper dive. And I would like to see that and to see that how that can inform our policy and budgetary decisions as we're trying to encourage people to perhaps stay in the school, you know, and to grow within that school, and if we have to provide additional supplements or what have you. So I, I would like to see that information in December. Because that won't be in January, so I want to see it in December.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Piggybacking, piggybacking off of Ms. Cosby's point. My request is to, because I think that ties in essentially to teacher retention. And that's another one of the goals that I'm eager to see, because I don't know that the last verbal update that we got from administration included the most recent data that the state has captured with teacher retention. And so I think it would be really helpful, specifically as we're thinking about graduation and so many of these other things, to be able to look at at the schools, you know, looking down at the school level to see what, what teacher retention is, is looking like. And, and it would be, too, I mean, as we're looking and thinking about, you know, the impact of, of the pandemic, to even get a report that speaks to the number of teachers lost, you know, at this point last year versus the same, you know, the same in years prior, to see, you know, to see if, if there has been a, a shift that is worth observing.
May I just briefly respond to that? Because I did get an update from the VDOE on that data. So UVA, who you know is, who has been analyzing that, the VDOE is a partnership with them for the statewide data. They expect to have the data for twenty nineteen, twenty by December, which will allow them to calculate retention for school year twenty eighteen, nineteen. Again, those are the folks that came into the nineteen, twenty year. So we don't yet have the data for that year you're speaking of, but based on this information from our, our colleague at the VDOE and UVA, I expect that's something we'd have by February.
So the data that I was referring to was the data that was FOIA'd. And if there was a, you know, there was a lawsuit and, but, but there was data that was FOIA'd that, that we have not shared publicly as a district. And so, so that is the data that I would like to see included in our, in a upcoming meeting.
I'm sorry, could you provide more details on the lawsuit? Not familiar with a lawsuit. I know the FOIA of which you're speaking.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
There was no lawsuit, just so you know. The FOIA. There was no lawsuit, just so you know. Yeah, the FOIA. But we did share that back with the board. Um, um, and we're happy, and I believe we posted that in other information. So I do believe it was shared publicly, but I will share it again. Again, we do have that gap year that we'll have in early winter.
So um, to be clear, there was a legal request to get the information, and that's how the FOIA was was received. Um, and I uh I I think as a uh key metric in our strategic plan, I want to ensure that. Um, that the that the information is public um and has been measured and is shared at the school level. Because it ties into so many things. Thank you.
Right. Ms. Cosby?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, and I forgot to mention or ask for um, uh, Dr. F, you talked about um. You mentioned that, okay, if we have them at the twelfth grade, we can keep them through until completion, right?
Correct.
And I know Ms. Burke came back and said, okay, well, there's some things that we have to do at an earlier stage too. Um, and you mentioned something about doing something at the middle school level. I just want to highlight that, you know, when we start looking at. People, uh, students who drop out, you know, it's not just, of course, that that this is what Ms. Burke, I think, was getting to, not just at the twelfth grade level. But, you know, we have different areas, so we know, you know, at these transitional times, um when we see the greatest. Um, when we start seeing the dropout. So from your eighth to ninth grade, you know, or your ninth to fifth grade. So um, would like to to. Um, in addition to the dashboard that Ms. Page was talking about with our twelfth graders. Um, but to look at or to develop a dashboard where we can look at students um as early as, let's say, the 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 seventh grade. And then, you know, of course, the ninth grade, where we're going to have these key transition periods um would be good and helpful.
Yes, yes. Prevention work, yes.
Okay, Ms. Page and then Mr. Young?
Thank you. Um, and it's more of a comment. Just want to um echo what my colleagues said, Ms. Cosby. We talking about the leadership, the stability of the leadership. You know, we talk about the um. The gains that we've seen in Armstrong. And yes, I'm so elated. But the leadership is sets the tone and the leadership while setting the tone is about building relationships. So we do need to take a deep dive. What's happening at Armstrong? That we can. You know. Compare um or emulate in some of our other comprehensive high schools that, you know, we are seeing, you know, um. You know, so we so then we can see that increase, those gains in our other comprehensive high schools, because something is going on there. Lessons learned. So again, I just want a comment, the leadership does set the tone. And our kids, they need stability. So. That's my com- that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Young?
Uh, well, first, uh, I want to uh share, really like everything Dawn just said, it is all about relationships. Uh, and second, I want to convey uh my support and gratitude to Tracy uh for what you're doing. Uh, really excited. Really excited going forward. Uh, but I I didn't hear, unless I missed it, I may have, uh, I didn't hear anything pertinent to. In higher education, we talk about engagement a lot, uh, because we, uh, all institutions of higher learning or most institutions lose a. Lose a lot of students and we spend a lot of time talking about engagement and specifically. Yes, obviously, the classroom, the academic component of it is essential, uh, but it's all those other things, right? It's, are you engaged? Like, you know, are you a member of a of a sports team? Are you? Are you doing robotics or or theater? And the point is, are you in, are you just showing up to school for the classroom? Or are you participating? Are you actually um a member of a community or to Dawn's point, use her terminology, do you have? Do you have a um a relationship with with the school community? What are, Tracy, uh, obviously, every school is is different and it is per- um partly contingent on um on the people there, but. But what are we doing as a district to support the students that um that are, that do have a higher probability of perhaps dropping out? Uh, what are we doing specifically um to complement the academic piece with with those other supports, i.e. extracurriculars or. Um, just other other kinds of supports where they have those relationships that Dawn was talking about?
Sure. Um, well, uh, you're speaking to my heart as a former high school principal. Um, I mean, having one meaningful relationship. Um, or connection to a school makes all the difference for a kiddo. Um, and um, the culture and climate of the building certainly sets that tone and. Um, again, I don't want to, I know we sort of went through the presentation quickly, but I do want to just give a huge shout out um to our school staff and. Our supports, uh, student supports team who really partnered with our schools um to to make uh this progress, you know, Armstrong, Raz, TJ. But I'm just really proud of the the leadership um of those schools. Um, in terms of what we're doing as a division, I think this. I I think, well, one is our three-part strategy, right? Like, we have to, we're remember, we're rebuilding a foundation. Uh, that was built on, you know, pillars of sand, basically. And remember, two years ago, all the things we listed that needed to be revisited. Um, and so I feel great confidence that we've made huge progress in rebuilding the foundations, just in terms of like. A student experience and that sort of like, what does your four years look like academically? Um, now we're building these different programs. We've got a lot more opportunity to build um those things in terms of. Um, where you're going to it, like the the part of dropout prevention is also engagement. And um, I think this is where. Our passion for learning work is, this is the sweet spot. Um, this is um, whether it's a STEM Academy. Or it's a meaningful and exciting uh career path from RTC to uh, you know, Dominion enter uh. Capital One Coding Program or something like that. So I think that is our big, that is our big push and, you know. It hasn't taken the forefront because of virtual learning, but that work is continuing. Um, and we we do plan to bring you guys an update around that. Um, because we we haven't forgotten about that work. Um, so that's the biggest piece. And as I think we get through some of this foundational work with graduation, um, we can then turn to some of these. Other uh relational pieces, we can have a more nuanced um early warning system, if you will. Identifying students who aren't meaningfully engaged in any of those examples you gave, for example. Um, so I think those are uh. Those are some of the things, but passion for learning is our big, I think, our big division-wide strategy. Um, we certainly. Um, we just, uh, we have a, uh, we've just brought on a student experiences coordinator as part of our broader out-of-school time work. I think Ms. Burke was at a. An event today um where we had the flying classrooms and a former pilot come and get our kids fired up about um that. So we have a lot of different things going on, but the connective tissue is going to be our passion for learning work.
Okay. Um, Ms. Cosby?
That's okay. Um, Dr. F, I'm a um addressed it. Oh, that's okay.
Okay. Then seeing no further questions or comments. We will move on to um six point oh three, receive an update on Goal Seven enrollment.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again. Um, wanted to present um an update. On our enrollment of this year, something that many divisions are looking at closely. Um, the state um is talking about. Uh, given notable shifts in different divisions enrollment uh due to COVID nineteen. Um, and so Jason, yes, he's got that up there. Okay. Um, as you know, Goal Seven is specifically related to our enrollment, and the way that we measure that is by using what's called the Fall Membership. And this is the number of preschool through twelfth-grade students that are enrolled in the division as of September thirtieth each year. Um, it is important to note that Fall Membership is different than ADM, um, or Average Daily Membership, an acronym that. Um, also, it can be used to think about um on average, how many kids are coming to school on any given day, but that's not um the anchor that's used here. Also of note, um ADM does not include preschool students, so just making sure that folks are aware when. We're comparing apples to apples versus apples to oranges with these two measures. A very important piece of context for our enrollment is that Richmond is one of three divisions around the state. That serve as an agent for one of the Virginia Department of Education's twenty multi-division online providers. And in this case, we serve as the agent for what's called VAVA or Virginia Virtual Academy. Our partnership with VAVA began back in twenty sixteen. Um, within RPS, VAVA students are reported through two of our schools. So K five, you'll see those students um tucked in with the Henry Marsh data, and for six twelve. You'll see VAVA students reported through Raz. That's why Tracy had just made that nod in the graduation deck that some of Raz's graduation rate. Um, was also our VAVA kids. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see um our official Fall Membership over time. And you'll notice that in the twenty sixteen seventeen year, there's a little light blue band on top of the darker blue band, and that's VAVA. That's twenty sixteen. Um, the previous administration began the partnership um with VAVA. So you'll see that over time, our our enrollment has remained relatively uh stable in the twenty-three thousands mark. And you'll see the VAVA uh membership has also remained relatively stable um until this past year. So a lot changed. In the twenty twenty-one school year that we're in right now. So let's take a little bit deeper dive on the next slide. So in twenty nineteen, twenty, we reported our overall Fall Membership at twenty-five thousand two hundred and twelve. And this year, our um enrollment, our Fall Membership uh is, excuse me, I just lost my slide, is twenty-eight thousand two hundred and forty. So this does show our enrollment up over three thousand students. However, it's important to drill down a little bit deeper as there are a couple of key drivers to our change in enrollment. The first, and you can see quite clearly, is the dramatic increase in the number of families that are choosing VAVA. That's most likely exclusively a result of COVID nineteen for that big of a jump. It's also important to note that of those um close to forty-two hundred kids, only thirty of them are from RPS. So most of this increase in enrollment is from around the state because VAVA takes um kids from all over the state um as a virtual academy. You'll then see the bulk of our enrollment at the K twelve level um went from twenty-one thousand four hundred ninety-two last year. To twenty-one thousand forty-three this year. Probably what our largest driver in this um small decrease. Um, is an increase in homeschooling. And so if we think about homeschooling. Last year, for the whole year, we had about four hundred and seventy-five kids um whose families opted to homeschool. This year, um, at the time of the Fall Membership, we were already up to seven hundred and forty-eight families choosing homeschooling. And that does continue to increase even um now in early November, we were up to eight hundred and eighty. It's most likely that those homeschool families will come back to RPS. Um, it's also important to note that our number here is actually quite in line with, if not even a little bit smaller than. Um, what we're experiencing as a state. And Dr. Lane shared this past week that Virginia Public Schools have um potentially lost up to thirty-eight thousand students this year. The last significant driver of the decrease in our enrollment is preschool. And of course, preschool is not compulsory. This year, we fell about six hundred and fifty students. Um, as many families chose to forego this. Um, especially as we had many conversations about online or virtual learning for our youngest learners. Um, families just did not opt um to do online learning for three and four-year-olds. Um, really, where notable supervision. Uh, would likely have been necessary um anyway. I will make one note is that the state is allowing us continued enrollment. Through early January for our VPI seat so that we can continue um to see an increase here. And you've likely seen some nods uh to our preschool enrollment um in Jason's RPS Direct. So again, while our enrollment um has gone down, um, we do expect to bounce back at the preschool level once we're back in person. And we do expect most of the homeschooling to bounce back um as well. With that, I'll um take any questions from the group.
Thank you, Ms. Udesco. Uh, Ms. Door?
Thank you. Um, so uh, we talked about this at the start of the school year. Um, about, you know, we we saw, we foresaw that there were going to be issues with um homeschooling and families opting out for this year. And um, I believe that um there was some activity at the state level in regards to getting a waiver for any decrease in funding. I was wondering if you could just speak to where we are with um any risks on the state funding level related to our enrollment?
I think Jason's going to try and then.
Um, so the General Assembly uh more or less punted on this uh on their most recent session. Uh, but in January, when they reconvened for their uh regular session, we'll take it back up. Um, I I will say, the most recent conversation that I have with Dr. Lane on this, he felt optimistic that the state would. Enact a a hold harmless provision uh for a couple of reasons. One. The money was already budgeted for the number of kids uh that folks anticipated last year, so. Um, there's no additional cost to um holding the divisions harmless. And then two. Nearly every division in Virginia has seen a decline in enrollment. So this is a unifying issue. Whether you're in rural Virginia, suburban, urban, red, blue, purple, it doesn't matter. Everybody has experienced this and so. It's one of those rare issues where there is uh unanimity of support. So um, his take was uh very likely that. A hold harmless provision would be enacted uh during the January session. It doesn't.
Again, the.
Yeah.
And then again, the funding for um VPI. That funding waiver that allows us to continue to receive funding um for eligible students who enroll through January eighth. Um, I think is another place where we'll um begin to build back any dollars that might have been lost. Um, with the preschool decline in enrollment. So we're feeling positive about that, too.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Door. I don't see any further questions or comments. So I think we can move on to the Chromebook distribution update.
Oh, sure, I can do that quickly. Um, so I'm uh pleased to report that Chromebooks are currently making their ways uh way to school. So and as you recall, in early November, um, they all had come into um our technology. Uh, partner who configured them, puts them on our console so we can uh push out security upgrades and updates um and other applications. So the first deliveries uh started heading out to schools on November fifth and continue through. So the first deliveries started heading out to schools on November 5th and continue through the 23rd. Each individual school is planning their own distribution activities based on the number of Chromebooks that they're receiving. So some schools may only have 30 or 40 to swap out from tablets or the use of personal devices, and they may be doing invitation-only events. Some schools who have larger numbers may be planning, while using, of course, health and safety protocols, distribution events to pass those out. Again, this should be a swap out for any child who's been working off a tablet and any child who's been working off of a personal device, so that everyone is on the RPS console using a Chromebook. The only place where we're offering at this point just a little bit of flexibility is with our preschools. Many of them are actually enjoying using the touchscreen and don't have as much need for the keyboard. And so we're working with those preschool families to make sure that families have what works best for their child. We certainly have enough Chromebooks to do that swap if they all wanted to, but that is a flexibility that's being provided. We're also continuing to pass out hotspots, lest any family is experiencing any internet or intermittent issues there. So we continue to provide technology to families as needed. Happy to take any questions on Chromebooks or internet.
Ms. Dorr?
Hi, thanks. There was an issue at one of my schools with the number of Chromebooks, the inventory of Chromebooks and the chargers getting counted. Has that been fixed? And can you just, just give a quick
Yeah. I worked with that individual principal. Yes, there was an unfortunate discount at the school level. But because we had 7,500 Chromebooks come in, there were a couple of schools whose count was just a little bit off of what they had initially submitted. But we have ample Chromebooks, so they're in a supplemental wave that's coming right after the 23rd and potentially earlier. So we have enough Chromebooks. Everyone is getting what they need.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Udesko. Looking, looking, looking. All right. So now it is, we will go to this, very patient Mr. Brazier, who's been waiting all this time to give us the quarterly financials and financials, quarterly financials for Patrick Henry.
Hello, everyone. Sean Brazier, I'm the new treasurer for Patrick Henry. So my update for our financial position for our 501(c)(3) account. We have enough cash on hand, so at $395,000, to cover our liabilities of $2.4,000 and our temporarily restricted net assets of about $338,000. I believe the financial statements are in y'all's packet, so happy to answer any questions or specifics if you have any.
I'm looking. Anyone have any questions for the treasurer from Patrick Henry? Mr. Young?
Sean, I just was hoping maybe you could share with folks who may not be as familiar with the, the new board and the excitement around the new, the new board at Patrick Henry.
Oh, yes. And thank you for the question. So I joined in September, so I'm also just getting familiar with the new board. But we have two new co-chairs that joined, I think, this summer. And so they've been getting up to speed and they've built out, I think, what is a great group of folks, a mix of parents and folks from the community. And I think we have about 17 board members right now. The majority of them, I think, have started in the last three to six months. And so we've been getting up to speed quickly. Our two co-chairs have been doing an excellent job of catching everyone up on where we've been as a school over the last 10 years, and particularly over the last two, and where we need to go over the next 12 months to make sure that, you know, we can institutionalize a lot of the knowledge that we're bringing together. So thank you for the question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brazier. Thank you very much for your patience with us.
Okay, thanks, y'all.
All right. And the financial statement for the period that ended October 31st? Who's that?
I'm happy to bring any questions back to Lynn that the group may have. We continue to remain on track. As last time, we are spending at a higher rate than we were at this point last year. But again, that's because we've made some extremely large purchases, such as the kits and the instructional technology. But there are no budgetary concerns.
All right. Thank you. All right, then we will, we received the budget calendar that was posted to Board Docs. Does anyone have a comment or question about the budget calendar? Ms. Dorr?
Hi, I see that, thank you for this. I see that we're having a pre-budget school board discussion on December 7th. One of the things that I would like to understand is the process for meeting with our principals to review their budgets. I think we've done various iterations of this in prior years and to varying levels of success. But I, I do think that, at least, I'm sure everyone's hearing from their principals, I'll speak for my district, that there are some staffing ratio concerns that I want to make sure that we're empowering our principals to give feedback on those items. So I would love an update on how we're, and how we're engaging principals. I know one year we had each principal create their own budget, and some principals went down to the granular level of like requesting staplers and others were a little bit more high-level. And some, there's a perception, and some, there's been a perception in some years that principals put all this work into their budget and then no one listens to it. So I just think there's a huge area of opportunity, and I know you guys are working on it, but I'd love an update there. And then I also would like an update on our year-round calendar discussion and if there are any budget implications as it relates to that.
All right. Do you need that right now? Or can you? Anybody responding? No?
I'm happy to respond. Okay. Yes, we have already begun engaging our principals. We sent out a survey two weeks ago to begin to capture their high-level division priorities, as well as things for their particular schools, and are beginning follow-up with them for discussions on how those needs can be met and certainly discussing them. And yes, on December 7th, we will draft calendars to pick off conversations. And one of those drafts will include a year-round option.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cosby. And then Ms. Gibson?
Well, Ms. Dorr asked one of my questions about the extended or year-round calendar. So I'm glad that, that will be forthcoming and that we have it on record that it's going to be forthcoming come December 7th. It's been a conversation that we've been anxious to have. And with the challenges of COVID, it is something that we need to have. But also, my question, my comment is, is going to be a little weird. You know, we're having these preliminary budget discussions. And then come January, there's going to be a new board with new board members. And I don't know, maybe this question is for Ms. Lily, in terms of being able to incorporate some, the, the new, the, the, the board members elect or the new board members who will be coming on, kind of in this, in, in this, in these preliminary discussions, because it is really, really a heavy lift, as we know, and as many school board, the boards before us and the boards before us, is such a heavy lift when you come in in January and you have to make a decision and turn around a decision in a month. It's crazy. And it is not conducive. It's not good business, really. It's just, it is, it is, it is too much of a lift. And if we can think about ways to start to incorporate our, you know, what some of our concerns are or things that we're seeing with the new board members. I don't know how that can happen, but I'm just talking about to really look at a great transition process. And I think it would just benefit the district and our, and our students, because during that turnaround in a month, and you're a new board member, and especially in this age of COVID, it is difficult.
Okay.
Well, I'll just briefly.
Okay.
I will defer to the board leadership. I knew that they are working on a brief orientation for board-elect members that may incorporate some of this and how the administration and board leadership, you know, incorporate them into a fuller discussion, since it's only going to be the December 7th meeting that this is going to be a topic at, certainly the board-elect can, you know, participate via public, you know, vehicle and listen in. But I would defer to the board leadership and administration on how the, the board-elect can tangibly participate in this preliminary process, given that, you know, your discussions will only start in, in December. And then, and the next, the heavy lifting of the work appears to be after that time, anyway.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was hoping that we could get an update on where we're at with the SRO discussion.
Ms. Owen, would you like me to respond?
Sure.
Given COVID, we just haven't had a chance to fully come back to that, but we're eager to do so right after the new board is seated.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't see any further questions or comments. Is there any new business? Are there any announcements? Ms. Burke?
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. I couldn't type like Dawn Page said fast enough. I would like to state as Dr. Epp reported earlier, delightful experience today at the Richmond International Airport, one of the hangars, where Barrington Irving, who's a Jamaican-American, who is a pilot, and he broke the world Guinness Book for Flying Around the World. He's the youngest gentleman that flew around the world. And he flew into Richmond, students from Armstrong, Wilder Middle School from Michael County. It was quite, quite an event. Students, their parents, the principals, Dr. Bell and his team, central administration persons were there. And the students were so elated to receive STEM boxes, including a real eyeball to dissect. But the reason for that eyeball in the box, seriously, is because there are hospitals on planes of which he's teaching the students that it's more to be in a pilot than just driving folks wherever. So the lesson was excellent. It was out on the beautiful day to be outside. The students were elated. A lot of parents said they were going to put everything on Facebook. I haven't had a chance to post my pictures yet. But this was also cosponsored through the DOE, Virginia Department of Education, next up, Richmond Public Schools and Michael Schools and a couple of other counties. But I'm glad, it was just a small group per se because of social distancing. But it was such a delightful experience. In those kits, those students will have virtual classes with the team from Barrington Irving, who lives in Miami. So just to be there and to meet the, the persons who will be facilitating the classes, it was truly an excellent hands-on experience. And I'm so glad I had an opportunity to, to meet the young man that broke the world record. Oh, you have the picture! Ah, yes. Of course, I had to get in the plane, try to go to Miami, enjoy some sunshine. But the children loved it. We toured the plane. We did the whole nine yards. And that's what Barrington Irving does. He, his business is to teach children to be, he learned to be a pilot because of meeting an African-American pilot elsewhere. And that's when he decided when he moved from Jamaica to America in the 80s, that that's what he wanted to be and do. So he talked about the whole STEM program. It was just an excellent experience. And it also was a history lesson because of studying the diaspora and knowing his being Jamaican, roots from Africa, just as many of the students that were, there was a very diverse group. But it was an excellent experience and kudos to Richmond Public Schools for being actively engaged. And I'm so proud again of Armstrong High School. Thank you.
Other announcements? All right, then I believe we have a closed session. And Ms. Wilson had sent out the motion. Does somebody have easy access to that?
Ms. Owen, I don't think there's a closed session. I thought that was just in case you all had something for
Oh, good.
the human resources actions. Attorney Lilly can chime in just to confirm, please?
We keep postponing that other matter, don't we?
There was no other reason for the
Okay, because we had to postpone that one.
Correct.
Oh, good. Oh, right. Well, if there is nothing further, I'm looking, I'm looking, then I hereby adjourn this meeting.